Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and proceed and get started with our work session. We have quite a bit of material to cover today. We'll make a minor adjustment to the agenda and we're gonna start with our school board policy review. And then we'll come back to item 3.01 in a moment. And so with that, Dr. Boone, if we can introduce and discuss along with Ms. Bassin, Reverend Haywood, and Dr. Burt Song as she comes forward and talk about the policy that we have before us.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mr. Jordan, ladies and gentlemen of the school board and our public. The policy committee has met and they are prepared to, as indicated, Ms. Bassin, Reverend Haywood, with support of Dr. Burt Song, to discuss the various policies that are presented today for review and discussion. And depending upon the actions today, we'll determine whether or not they move to approval for the June 20th meeting. So with that out, Ms. Bassin, Reverend Haywood, I don't know who's on first.
Okay, I'm just pulling it up. All right, so we have, on the agenda today, we have policy I-I-B-E-A-Z-G-A-B-Z-A, Bring Your Own Device. You'll see on the revised policy, there was some concern that was, you know, brought to our attention about, you know, as we're technologically evolving, that there are devices that are new and coming out and there are devices that don't require wireless connectivity such as the Gizmo gadget, which are used primarily, you know, for, with very limited communication capacity as well as limited, or, and is used really for, you know, location identification of a child. So in looking at the policy, we've updated it to include, under section three, you know, to include smartwatches, one of the Bring Your Own Device, adding that to it because now we have, you know, cellular capability of smartwatches, as well as including that, you know, the Gizmo gadgets and other devices because there may be something that comes out, you know, next month that does something similar. But just to say that it is okay to wear devices such as that that, you know, don't require wireless connectivity but can be used for other purposes, just to make it clear for principals and parents about what's acceptable. So that is the biggest change in that policy. Do any of you have any questions, objections to that addition?
Just for clarity, you said it was driven by the administration, the staff, to make these updates? This is not related to anything from VSBA, this is just?
No, this is, this is driven by the administration and-
Bringing this into line.
Also parents.
Right, to bring us in, yes, yeah.
Oh, we had some parents, okay.
Who have asked about specific devices.
Okay.
Right, right.
And so the difficulty that we have had is the technology's changing so quickly-
Right.
-that it's difficult to create a policy that captures all of this as per the Gizmo gadget and so forth, so.
Right. So it gives us a little, a little more flexibility by making it clear about what is and isn't acceptable. So I'm not hearing any objections to these changes, okay. And then next, we have changes to the standards of student conduct. Under section seven, communication devices, well, first off, we thought that who carries a beeper anymore? So-
You might be surprised.
Well, yes, I know, I know beeper, I know very well that beepers still do exist, but I don't think our students are wearing such fashionable devices.
Retro.
Beepers are kinda like Facebook for teens, right?
Yeah, that's right. Wouldn't be caught with that. But anyway, we've, we've, we've updated it to, to reflect again, some changes updating it to current technology. Are there any objections to that?
And that would be the only change there.
That's the only change.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say to the board, we'll be coming back throughout the summer with additional changes as it relates to code of student conduct and certain things based on the legislative act. You know, they're, they pass bills that limit suspensions for certain students or, and limits the long-term suspension for most infractions to 45 days. And so we will be discussing that with the board going forward once we have greater guidance on those.
And that comes as coming from the Department of Education?
Actually, those are coming from the legislature. The guidance is coming from VDOE.
That's what I'm asking, right, okay.
Yeah, and, and I do wanna point out as well, you know, it says students, which leaves it, it originally had just students in there, which could be, you know, elementary on. So we wanted to be very clear about who we're talking about, who the target is, and in line with our BYOD policy that we've updated to include secondary students, to be clear. So those are the only changes that have been made.
And that was gonna be my question, so just as, just remind me, so in our current BYOD pilot and initiatives, don't we have at least one school that's a 3-8 or a K-8?
Yes.
That, but in that, in those schools, only the middle school students?
The sixth through eighth is considered secondary.
Right, so only the, only the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are allowed to?
Right. Well, I believe in, Ms. Jessie, oh, there you are. If you wanna respond, but I believe the element, correct me if I'm wrong, but the elementary students with permission from their parents may bring, if there's a process in place where, where they may be able to bring that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Hold on, you can-
Let him get to the mic. Go to the mic, Jessie.
Yes.
That's an IT guy for you.
First mic is all right.
Always looking for a shortcut?
Right.
Right. Sorry, I apologize. Yes, we have, we do have the support structure to actually support BYOD in the entire district. I know at this time, we were just trying to figure out whether we're gonna move forward with allowing elementary students to hop on board. But yeah, as of now, the entire school district is ready.
Correct.
Right. But specifically in terms, I was just asking in this policy, because we're going out of the way of changing it from students to secondary students, we're saying right now, we don't have any instances right now where non-secondary students may find themselves caught in the-
Well, and I think that's what Ms. Bassin was saying, there have been some requests by parents based, and so those are handled on an individual basis, but not offered in the policy as the blanket piece because, you know, secondary students will lose a lot too. Elementary students lose a lot more. And so the idea of having to constantly chase cellphones at the elementary level at this point is kinda burdensome on the school's administration.
Oh, I, well, you all know, I'm far more, think that we should allow students to have far more access to the technology. My concern was just making sure that the policy didn't unintentionally create some problem. And even if there's the-
Dr. Harold Lance is saying no, also.
Okay. And even in the case where there's the case by case for parents, that we make sure that our policies and regulations account for that.
Yeah.
So we don't find ourselves dealing with situations where at one school, parents say it operates this way and another school, it operates something different. Come to the-
Good afternoon. Just to be clear though, the, on the case-by-case basis as far as the smartwatches are concerned, as was mentioned, we have had a handful of parents that we are aware of who've asked about it, but we typically, through our student handbook and unless something changes, would continue to support the use by the secondary students only. So if we're going to do something different at some point, we would have to address that and make the change to all of those documents as well, or the documents within the handbook. So what we've practiced has been the support of the use of that particular technology by secondary students. And we have procedures in place to address that when those practices are violated, but we don't have that in place for elementary school students at all at this point.
Rodney, is your question, at the BYOD pilot schools, are there non-secondary students with devices in schools? And I think, Kenyatta, are you acknowledging yes over there?
Well, so the question seems to be evolving. The question seems to be evolving. Certainly, if it's something we're asking a school to do, then we've put it under the pilot of the BYOD that the board approved previously.
Okay.
We started that pilot primarily at secondary schools and with our evening school programming. And so going forward, as we begin to expand the access around BYOD, as well as the district providing additional devices in some of our schools, you know, we've been purchasing devices, to give you a perfect example, obviously, we have a waiver, if you will, lowercase w in quotes, for Berkeley Campus Dollar Early Childhood Center. Those students, through the Apple Connect Ed program, each have a device. And so based on that, we don't have a prohibition for those students because that's part of a pilot related to the Apple Connect Ed. So we're dealing with these on a case-by-case basis. The policy primarily talks about those devices that are outside of instructional use. These are more in terms of personal use.
Right.
The BYOD piece addresses what happens instructionally, should a student choose to bring their own devices to the support of the instructional program.
Thank you. Any, any other questions about this policy? Okay, I'm not hearing any. And that is all that we have on the docket for today.
So these will appear on our business meeting on, on June 20th, more than likely on the consent agenda unless at that time someone wants to have them considered separately. Anything else?
Our tour is about 10 minutes out.
Anything else from school board policy review? All right. We are stalling for time, just so you know. You know, we had first on our list to do a special recognition for our school board representatives and one is en route. So I think he's about 10 minutes away. How about we go to 3.05? Earlier, we've just come out of session and reviewed a personnel docket. And I'd like to know if there's a motion to approve the personnel docket.
I make a motion, we approve the personnel docket.
Second.
Okay, moved by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Doyle. Any more discussion at all on the docket?
Hearing none. Mr. Butts, if you would, call the roll, please.
Excuse me, Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan? Aye.
We could actually do operations in-
I was gonna ask that next. So if we can go to 3.06, you all know at our last meeting, we voted on our operational budget. At that time, we still had some questions around resolutions that need to come forward from the city, as well as actions that were still taking place at the general assembly at that time. So I ask if Dr. Boone would give us a budget update and let us know what our steps forward will be for, for the month of June.
Thank you. Pearl Toe informed me, us this morning, that the ordinances for child nutrition and grants will be approved, City Council, at its June 12th meeting on Tuesday. And then we will be ready to bring to the school board for the June 20th meeting, the final approval of those ordinances for child nutrition, grants, and then the CIP piece. So that's where we are in terms of that, that work.
Ms. Doyle?
So based on the budget that was passed at the state level, did we realize any additional funding from the state?
We're still waiting for the calculation tool on that. I, I keep hearing out in rumor world that there are all these figures out there. We have not seen the actual calculation tool, but as soon as we count, do, receive that, we will be providing that information to the board because if there are additional funds, we will need to ask the board to appropriate those funds also. Certainly, the, some of the, the figures that were out there were based on some of the early revenue opportunities. But again, with some of the revisions and things that were made to the final budgets based on that budget that was agreed upon, both, I think, Chris Jones and others put forth, there were still some modifications around that. So that's why we have to wait for the count tool because at this point, it's still, a lot of the figures that had been tossed around were based on those earlier budgets.
And when will that come to us?
We're hoping, we're waiting any day now-
Okay.
-to receive that. Of course, Governor just approved the budget.
Right.
I meant, well, actually-
He signs it tomorrow.
Right, so it won't come to us till he signs.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Dr. Are you comfortable with doing the academic affairs portion at this time?
Absolutely. As, as Dr. Rogers looking for Ms. Malinak, the, we can go into the Title I application and Titles II through V, applications, you know, we have been doing these as a consolidated piece. Then we'll also, we also have included the recommendations for the school board scholarships as, and that information. But let's start with the title grant. So Dr. Rogers and Ms. Malinak.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boone, school board members, Chairman Jordan. This evening, we're gonna give you a high-level overview of where we are with our title grants in terms of the application that is due upcoming July 1st. And I want to keep in mind before we give the information that the numbers may shift slightly once we get final numbers from the state, but nevertheless, we still have information to share with you. After Ms. Malinak presents information on Title I, we'll have Dr. Katal to come up and share the application that he has prepared for both, well, for all Title II, Title III, and Title IV applications. And I'll remind the board that Title IV is a new grant that we have, and this is our second year that we've made some adjustments to. So without further ado, I'll ask Ms. Malinak to share information from that and then I'll step aside, let Dr. Katal to come up and share.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Sure.
Dr. Boone, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, thank you for having us. We're here to present the Title I Part A application, again, as Dr. Rogers mentioned, due July 1, and it does require the school board's approval and vote. So we received our preliminary allocation about a month ago, and this preliminary allocation is based on 2016 census data, which includes poverty and population estimates. Sorry, there we go. So the preliminary allocation that we received was actually an increase by quite a bit compared to last year's final allocation. The final allocation will end up being lower than what you see there on the slide, as VDOE has to account for the private school bypass that we participate and several other districts participate in, and there's other set-asides such as school improvement. So we usually get those final allocations in October, so we know that typically it is a little bit lower. However, we do anticipate receiving some kind of an increase based on last year. Since we don't know that exact amount, VDOE has told all school districts facing what we're facing to plan on level funding, which is what we did in this application. With that level funding of approximately $12.9 million, we're gonna support 34 Title I schools. That includes 29 elementary schools, four middle schools, and one high school. That's the same that we had last year. There is no additions or reductions from that. Although we did anticipate that reduction, we are actually going to have a little bit more in the end. As I mentioned earlier, 61% of the overall funding goes to the schools to support their instructional programming. That is the exact same as last year. 23% goes to the Title I preschool program and to support the VPI program. And the remaining funds go to support Camp Young, division-level program support, family engagement, support for communities, community facilities that serve neglected students, and then support for the McKinney-Vento program, which is for our homeless population. And then just sort of a high-level overview of what the schools intend to do with their funds. They range everything from hiring personnel in the form of Title I teachers, parent liaisons, paraprofessionals, and other instructional support staff. They also do part-time funds for both in-school and after-school programs, professional development, field trips, and of course, general and instructional supplies. And that is the high-level overview for Title I. If you have any questions, I certainly can entertain them.
Ms. Bassin?
I don't know if this is in effect now, but I believe that Title, can Title I money, is it in effect that they can be used for gifted resource teachers?
Title I funds can be used to support the overall instruction of any school. So if a school would choose to use that to support gifted, they certainly could do so with prior approval from VDOE if it was staffing. But if it was something else instructional in nature, they absolutely could.
Okay. And what about for special education, they can?
Same thing, yes. Yep. As long as it's supporting the overall instructional program. And that includes behavior as well, that's a new change under ESSA.
Yeah.
Again, as long as they're the instructional side of that behavior and not just simply doing discipline. There has to be that instructional component.
Okay, so this one behavior specialist is in addition to the three that we've, okay.
Anyone else? Just general, in January, I believe it was, when I participated with the VSBA Legislative Conference and visits on Capitol Hill, I had asked a question of some congressional staffers about, you know, our Title I high school. And I think at the time, when we discussed it last year, it, at least I interpreted that the federal government was forcing it on us versus, or somebody was forcing it on us. It wasn't like something that we requested. And there seemed to be some dispute as to whether or not it can occur that way. I don't wanna go into, in terms of this application, 'cause I know we had it there, but I remember raising it before and I just wanna raise it again, that, you know, whether or not that is required and what it means for us in terms of resources and all the things that we, that we talk about, that if there's an opportunity, whether now with ESSA or even based upon whatever the rationale was before, that we may wanna just look at it again, at least some.
Sure.
If I ask Ms. Malinak to talk about what are the percentages and the data that create the guidelines for us and then I can talk about where we are as a district.
So last year, we had to add Booker T. as a Title I high school because by regulation, once a school goes above 75% poverty at risk, low income, different terms used by different people, once it gets above that 75% threshold, we are required to serve the school under, under Title I. Probably some of the pushback that you may have felt was there's a provision called the skipped school provision. So if a district, and there are districts throughout the country, including Virginia, that will skip schools. And so there is an option to skip a school. However, when you do that, what that means is you don't, it's not that you don't serve them, you would actually have to give them those funds in your local budget.
Right.
So if they're eligible for X number, $100,000, you have to find that somewhere to give them. Because you often find out very late in the ballgame, that'd be hard to do in a budget cycle to just find that money to give to a school. But that is certainly something that you can always do going forward if we wanted to, to do that and remove them as a Title I school.
In a historical perspective, you will recall, as I mentioned to the board, when we were having to discuss this before, Norfolk had used that skip provision when it developed the middle school quality efforts. And the idea was, we would give schools positions, funding, to support its turnaround and its need for, because of high poverty, high percentage of poverty students in those schools. However, at some point, the district made the decision to avoid, to eliminate that skip. I, I don't know if, if the thinking was that we would get more money, but the number is based, the money is the money. And so now, we have 34 of our 44 schools that are eligible for Title I services. But the district had been making the investment in our middle schools at a level, and it wasn't the same amount for each school, it was based on where it was going. And that's what allowed us to do the skip. But we no longer were employing that. And, and I would infer too, that through the recession and the difficult funding period, some of those were things that were done, even though, as you recall, some of the positions that, when we were doing some budget rightsizing over the last two years, that I recommended eliminating were those MSQEP positions, 'cause then we were double-dipping. And so we, we kept some of the positions and some of the funding there, even though we now had the additional Title I fund. So that's why it allowed us to move some funds out.
Anyone else? And so in terms of, I'll come back to you. But, so this would be something you would ask us to vote upon on June 20th?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bassin?
So I see here, you know, so these resources were determined by the schools based on data and identified needs. Can you talk a little bit about that process?
Sure. So we work with the principals very closely in the springtime, well, throughout the year, but certainly the springtime was we're doing the application. We ask them to look at their data, look at the needs of their schools on a programmatic level, whether it be staffing or resources, to determine how they wanna use the funds that they're going to get for next year. And so they, they submit to me sort of a preliminary plan of where they want, you know, a certain amount of money in contract services to support professional development, a certain amount under supplies or technology for some purchases they wanna make. And then over the summer, they will work on a very detailed plan so that they can use their actual SOL data that's coming back now, and they can make a very strategic plan. They can choose which professional development to do, for example. So they'll give a much more detailed plan over the summer. But they absolutely use the data, both SOL, behavior, attendance, et cetera.
And the executive directors of schools are working very closely with those schools in relation to any of those that are prior to their focus under the state's accountability system. And so we look at all of those data points and, and work very closely with them throughout the year as to how we are leveraging resources to drive the needs that they may have for the particular identified goals in a school.
And I guess I'm asking because it's my hope that it's beyond SOL, 'cause we know, and I, not to bring this up again, but the gifted resource teacher, what we know, you know, in some of our Title I schools, they tend to be more underrepresented, and we know there's emerging talent there. And with ESSA, you know, the changes in ESSA, with the money being allowed to use for that, you know, I wanna advocate that we suggest that that be a resource that is in those schools and it's not just, you know, I know it's not just remediation or, or, you know, that, that we are providing that resource for enrichment on a consistent basis so that that can help with identification, you know, really understanding what the characteristics are so that we can get children from all, you know, all schools.
We certainly received that as a strong recommendation. The one caveat and challenge around that is because the budgets are so tight and they are driven by the enrollments in the school, if we were to, if a school was to select having a GRT, then they have to decide what offsets it. And, and then does the district have the ability to backfill something they have to give up? And so those become the challenges. As, as Ms. Malinak was saying, basing this budget on level funding and yet, you know, the board approved an average 3.3% increase, that also hits those grants. So any increases in salary and benefits also have to be borne by the grants that fund those positions. And so sometimes we have to walk back certain things, the, the schools have to make some tough decisions as to what goals they want to, to achieve and, and put their resources toward. But we will certainly include that in our planning thoughts.
And if I can, I can confirm that there were several schools last year who, although they couldn't maybe afford a staff member, like you're mentioning, they did send their school counselors, gifted resource teachers, and a variety of other non-classroom teachers to conferences that supported their area of expertise. And so they are getting some of that professional development to then bring back to the school.
I'd like to go on to your next presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Boone?
Good afternoon.
Mr. Jordan, members of the board?
I apologize, I said Titles II through V. My new contacts don't quite, didn't try to catch it. As soon as I said V, I was like, I think that's how you add. Now I find the one is one of the, the I is one of the B. Now I find that one is one of the, that is one of the, the.
Yes, I'll be talking about titles two, three, and four tonight. And also, as Ms. Malinak had initially indicated, actual allocation amounts will not be released till after July one. So this is preliminary, this information, and we're looking at level funding. So we're looking at what we received last year and just applying the same numbers. And the programs are very similar. There's, there's not been a lot of differences or changes within its titles. But I'll go through that. As Dr. Rogers indicated, Title Four is new last year, and so we're just continuing it from this year. Okay, for Title Two, this is teacher principal training. We always call it TPT. We have, in their positions, we have eleven positions. We have five reading and math specialists, which work at the school level. We have four content specialists that work at the division level. So we have one in each of our subject areas, math, science, English, social studies, that work up at the central office. But they have to spend seventy percent of their day in a school, working with teachers and working with students. So, but they are housed at the central office. We have a professional development coordinator. We also have a budget technician. And the budget technician works with information that, you know, because we do serve private schools. So private schools do get a certain percentage of our money. So keeping up with everyone within the division and keeping up with private schools does take some additional assistance. So that's why we have a budget technician in there as well. We have teacher principal mentors. The mentors that we have, each of our schools, fifty-four schools, all have a mentor that works with new teachers. And so we provide some funds coming out of Title Two. We have part-time teachers for curriculum writing. A lot of our curriculum writing that we go through, when the state makes changes, we have to come through and really break that down to what that means specifically and working with teachers. So we do, we do have professional development money for curriculum writing, as well as substitutes. Because when we have our ILT meetings, and we want to have as many teachers representing their schools as possible, it requires substitutes, so we have to pay for those substitutes. We do that through Title Two. Then we also have professional development in-building, conferences, training. If there's a specific training that's going on, we'll use those funds to send a teacher or specialist to, to get some additional training. And then, of course, the required private school set aside, as I mentioned before. So that's pretty much Title Two, very similar to what we did for last year.
You will recall, last year, we had to move graduation coaches out of Title Two because that was no longer an allowable expense. And so we've been covering them at the dish, operation level. It's crazy. I know. You would think that was supporting students.
That's what that's designed for. I mean, you would think.
We had a, about a seventeen percent reduction, I believe it was, last year.
Yes.
Also, in the overall Title Two fund. So we had to make a, that's, so we had that adjustment, about four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, a little more, about five.
Yeah, five, that, that we had to reduce. Based on that, and of course, you will recall, during several of, the last couple of White House budgets have addressed total elimination of Title I, but Congress hasn't supported that, so we're still going with it. But you will recall last year, when we talked about the four hundred and sixty-five positions that we had funded by grants, somewhere in this position too.
I also share with the board that part of those funds from Title Two are used to support our partnership with focus schools that helps us with our district-wide redesign.
It was about six years ago that the graduation coaches were reintroduced to Norfolk Public Schools. And I remember when that occurred, and it, it really boosted the graduation rates at that time. I mean, it would, when, when talking to the principals at that time, it just gave them another tool in their arsenal to, to get kids to graduate. And it's just ludicrous that that would be eliminated from there. It is what it is.
So if we go to the second title grant, talking, that I'll be talking about tonight, Title Three. This is for our English learners. English as a Second Language, ESL, has been, that name been updated. It is now called, they're called English learners, so Ls is what you'll hear frequently. So the money that we receive for Title Three is provided mostly professional development opportunities for general education teachers and teachers of these L students. As they come into our division, we have different levels. Of course, a Level One or Level Two L student requires additional time, additional resources to, to help bring them up to speed. Supplementary materials to support instruction. Of course, we have summer enrichment, too. They go to, kind of like a summer camp that they'll go to. They'll go to different field trips and things, and we do that for the English learners. We have purchased some software to help monitor student progress, respond to student data, as well as streamline our program documents and management. Part-time teachers for additional direct services to Ls, and then we have that required private school set aside. That takes up pretty much of all of Title Three.
And that's not a very large grant for us.
A hundred and one thousand.
Hundred and one thousand. So as our numbers increase, we hope that those two increase, and we hope that the federal government won't try to take those away.
And the last one is the new grant that we started last year. Last year, if you remember, it came late. It came very late in the year. And so by the time everything came through, it was after the new year. But with Title Four, we were looking at having a few positions in there, as well as some resources for our students. And so one of our additions, something new that we're going to be having this year, is a teacher for overage students at the elementary level. So we have some elementary schools that have some students that are more than a year or two older. And so to provide them additional time, resources, more specific assistance and care, we have a teacher that's going to be paid out of that Title Four position, that Title Four grant. We also have AP test fees. We try not to pass those costs to students. And so we try as much as we can to make sure we cover a portion of everybody's AP test fee, but students that are free and reduced lunch, we do pay for all of those, a hundred percent. So in order to keep that, it requires additional funds. And as we start increasing the number of, the numbers of our students taking AP courses, that just increases the, the amount of money. So we're really happy to do that. We are continuing with the transition specialists and the safe school specialists. Remember, those are new positions last year. And also the required private school set aside in there. So that's the conclusion. Any questions for Titles Two, Three, and Four?
Dr. Gabriel?
For the overage student elementary classroom teacher, is that someone who's going to come in and work with the kids within their class? Or are kids going to be pulled out, out of that?
We, we actually have been doing this. Now we have a funding source for it.
Okay.
You will recall, we started one, I think, right at the end of my first year here. And so as we, looking at that umbrella of concerns around student behaviors and what are the things that are, what are some of the root causes, obviously being overage for grade, and yet underwear you should be for your achievement creates that. So we've continued with a class to be able to support some students. It's not a huge class, because again, it is not a dumping ground. But we've been working with principals to really identify those who are most overage for grade in elementary schools, to see how we can better support them and, and give them the additional services to improve their outcomes.
Well, I had the exact same question.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, it works. All right, cool. When it comes to the English learners and that, say, how does the school board and just the pub, the, the district plan to address students who are E, like, English learners, and they're far over, like, they're far above the age that they need to be? Because I know in times, I've encountered students who may be in their twenties, and they're still a part of the English learners ESL programs within the schools. And for many of them, they've, like, graduated within their own country. And so for them, often, oftentimes, they'll end up dropping out and just not coming back to school because they are feeling like it's, there's not much help for them at this stage that they're at, because they've already gone through this. So how is that, how, what, in what way can, like, the school board, like, really, and the district, kind of address those kids? Because I know that many of them have spoken to me, and I've spoken to them, about this issue. Because I've had even a friend who, who was an ESL kid who ended up dropping out because he didn't feel like he was getting so much help being now in his, like, early twenties and still having to go through this high school process all over again, but now just in a different language. And that would be, that cut away from years that he could have had walked back at home. So what could we, like, that's just something I wanted to bring up regarding English learners.
That's a great.
Let me, let me start with, with part of the technical challenge on that. And certainly, Dr. Rogers and Cataldo can talk about specifically what we're doing. One of the challenges with English learners who appear in the, in the country without academic records, that's usually the reason they end up placed in the schools and, and that support. Now, we can certainly, for young adults who feel that they've completed the high school piece, we can try to help them in accessing their records. And if they feel they have completed that high school requirement and can document such, then we could perhaps refer them to adult English language services versus the, the high school ones. But usually, the students who appear are unable to document their high school success. And therefore, when they want to go to next level of experiences, either post-secondary training, community college, four-year college, or other, military, it's difficult for them to document. So many come through the schools with the goal of being able to document their completion of high school so that they can have the tangible piece that will help them go to the next step. But we're concerned.
That's exactly what I was going to say. That's always the challenge. And we do have staff members that are highly trained, and they go through great lengths to try to get documentation that demonstrates that the student, and not just L students, but it could be students that come from out of state, that they've met the requirements for graduation in Virginia. So it's a challenge that we continually look at and how to best fit the needs of the student. But as Dr. Boone shared, we can try to meet students where they are, and if we can help them with adult services, then we certainly can.
I would say too, just to add to that, we've really been working on getting, looking at students case by case, especially ones that are overage, looking to help them graduate, and also providing additional courses via web-based courses, so Gradpoint, D2L, things like that. So being able to provide them some other avenues to fit into their schedules. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Great question. Anything else at this point?
So these are Titles One through Four. How many numbers are placed now? And so, again, you also have a specific detail that's attached. That's one of the documents also in, in board docs for this. And we will be asking the board for approval of these grants in the June twentieth meeting.
And next you have some recommendations for?
Scholarship.
School board scholarships.
Ms. Harmon?
Ms. Harmon?
This, as, as Ms. Harmon is coming to the, to the mic, this is the ongoing responsibility, opportunity through the Old Dominion Support System as it relates to offering scholarships for Norfolk Public Schools graduates. And so Ms. Harmon is our district guidance coordinator, and she facilitated the process for us.
Good afternoon. So the school board, in nineteen thirty, there was an agreement between the city of Norfolk and the school board of Norfolk Public Schools. An agreement was established because the city of Norfolk acquired some land, which was the old Larchmont School property in nineteen thirty. And it was acquired by the college, then the College of William and Mary in Virginia. And as a result, there was agreement between the school board and the city upon the completion of this transaction that each year, the school board would be allowed to, I guess, recommend students for a scholarship at the then William and Mary, which is now ODU, or Old Dominion University. That the university would pay for a portion of the education of students ten former Norfolk Public Schools who were going on to be students at ODU. And they would pay up to fifteen credits per semester, a total of thirty credits for the year. And in my research, I found that they've paid as much as three hundred and twenty-five dollars per credit for the students. So essentially, those ten students would acquire about almost five thousand dollars per year from ODU. Or at least they would pay that much in scholarship dollars towards the students' education. The students would have to, in order to maintain the scholarship for two years, and it only pays for two years. The students, in order for them to maintain that scholarship, would, of course, the, the minimum would have to have a GPA of a two-point-five and would have to be considered a full-time student at Old Dominion University. In talking to one of the Old Dominion University financial aid officers, they did indicate that that amount does change depending on the increase in tuition and fees each year. This year, we were able to select three students, and that is because we had seven students who continue to meet the requirement to be covered in terms of tuition and fees. And so this year, we were able to recommend three students. But we also chose, in the case that a student may decline, I don't know why people would decline for money, but.
My son.
Okay.
Or choose another college, too.
But, or choose another college. That's, that's what I should have said, the politically correct thing to say. But if a student should do so, then we also are asked or requested to choose three alt, alternatives, alternates. And so we've done that. So we have sent the recommendations forward, and I believe that now rests with the school board.
So we will receive these candidates. You all see them listed. And we would be prepared to act upon that at our June twentieth meeting. Is that correct? You don't need any action today. Is that correct?
June twentieth.
June twentieth.
June twentieth. So any questions about the process or anything else? Ms. Doyle?
So on one of the pages, it says participating Norfolk High Schools. It includes Norfolk Collegiate?
It does. And the agreement, in talking to the individual at ODU, the agreement was, as long as the student was a resident in the city of Norfolk, which can include the private school students as well.
Gotcha.
And typically, in talking to my assistant, typically, what we've had is, we generally have two students, at best, three students, private school students who apply. And so in, in this case, we had two this year, one of which made the requirements, one did not.
Okay. Thank you.
And historically, I recall previously having seen private school students on the rubric as being recommended.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. We will receive these names and add that as part of our June twentieth agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I believe that's it for?
Just that we, we have listed graduation schedule and the academic affairs, the times. We know all of our graduations are at the Ted Constance Center. Please let Mr. Butts know if you would like to attend any of those so we can make sure you get the appropriate credentials so that, you know, you can come in without any issues.
All right. We will go back up to item three dot zero one. I'd like to.
Which talk graduation is a perfect segue.
That's a perfect segue. You took the words right out of my mouth. I'd like to have our student school board representative and alternative, they would come forward, Arturo and Andrew, and take a seat for a moment. So you all know, normally at our business meetings, we may do various ceremonial activities. We have the honor of having our school board reps who have served us admirably this year. Of course, each of them will be graduating next week, and our next board meeting is June twentieth. So we didn't know for sure whether or not they would show up for the June twentieth. So we thought we would take the opportunity to thank them and recognize them for their service. And as part of that, last year is during the graduation ceremony, I can recall, as our previous student rep came across the stage, Dr. Boone commented that it would be very nice if our student board representatives had some type of sash or recognition that they could have with them as to wear during the graduation. And so with that, Dr. Boone and the administration have, I'll tell you this with me, have developed a medal for each of you. Have developed a medal for each of you.
Thank you.
And so we'd like to present you with your medal and also.
A pen.
Yes, sir. Andrew, medal.
Thank you.
Just since we are at our dais, if you all wouldn't mind, if we could just stand in our seats and recognize them for their great year of service. And with that, we'll offer you the opportunity to offer any final comments as part of your service.
And share where you're going to school or what you're doing thereafter.
Well, I'll be attending University of Virginia coming next four years, so I'm looking forward to that. But it is gonna be sad to see all you guys go and I leave to go up to Charlottesville. Because I had a great experience being a part of the school board, getting to meet all you guys and come to many of the meetings. And see the dynamic of how a board will work with different opinions and coming deck consensus. It was just a great experience to get exposed to. The interview experience was, was great as well to help me for later on in my life. And just like this acknowledgement just proves how friendly you guys are and how great of people you are. And I just had a really great time. So thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's my turn now too.
Yes.
I don't wanna cry, so it's all good. Oh, that was loud. Well, I'll be going to Stanford University in the fall as well, so kind of reciprocating what Andrew said. I'm gonna miss y'all. It's gonna be all the way across the country, so it's gonna be a lot, much more of a hike, so. I really did enjoy this year. Thank you, Dr. Boone. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, all the members of the school board for making me feel very included in everything that you guys have done. Whether it be with like, kinda like the little retreats you guys would do in order to, at different conferences and even the one in Williamsburg, being able to attend that. I really learned a lot that it does carry in because of you, I was able to know what exactly goes on behind the scenes when it comes to education. And especially in how much you guys do to really benefit and evolve the school, like the education system that I've been a part of for thirteen years. For me, it's very enlightening and it's honestly also strengthened like desire to continue doing this sort of thing even in college. As like I did put down in my Stanford forums, I'm interested in interning with educational school board, so plan on doing that over there too. So it's, it's honestly been an honor and a blessing to be here. I've learned a lot about the intricacies of the school boards. And it really does allow me to understand that, kinda like I could draw parallels, like I talked with Dr. Boone in my initial interview, draws parallels between running a business. It is very similar to how you, the school board and like the entire district is run. And so that really does kinda like pave the way for what I wanna do in the future. So I'm very grateful for all of you and I hope that you guys just keep doing, yeah, you guys are gonna do amazing things and it's just, you are doing amazing things. And I appreciate all the work you do for me and all the students here in the NPS and it's been a pleasure working with you guys.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you both.
And again, we thank you for your service. Think you're gonna clap, where you gonna clap?
Well, and, and we're your medallions proudly at graduation next week.
And that's what I was gonna do is allow Dr. Boone, if she had any final remarks, having seen them through the interviewing process to completing their service.
It's interesting how quickly a, a year goes by. Because last year this time, I was about to bring their names to the board as a recommendation. And again, it's where we, I, we asked the board, would they consider an alternate too because of the value of having two voices and, and support with each other. So I, I appreciate the board approving the, the alternate also because we had the value of having student voice in nearly all of our meetings this year. So, so that was great. And it has really been a pleasure getting to, to know these two fine young men. And we certainly will, will follow your, your careers at UVA and at Stanford. And you know Norfolk Public Schools is always home, so just yell if you need us. You know how to find us, so just yell if you need us. And at June 20th, I'll bring you the recommendations for the next school year for student representatives to the school board and the alternate.
Anyone else have any final comments they'd like to offer? If not, we, we thank you again and we understand if you'd like to be excused, but of course, you're welcome to resume your position. Since your term actually doesn't end until June 30th, if I believe.
But should you decide to leave, or when you decide to leave this afternoon, you can take the insert out of your nameplates and take that with you also.
That's nice. All right.
You can keep those. Okay, the base we kinda need, but the insert.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the honor.
So we will proceed back and move to item three dot zero three, educational planning. As the board is fully aware, we've been involved with educational planning and facilities, master planning for some time now. Our current strategic plan calls for some strategies and big ideas for us to look at a variety of factors. As we continue our mission of being a cornerstone of a probably diverse community. And so we're here today to receive some updates and recommendations as relates to some actions that we'll take on June 20th. And then others that are very much for consideration moving forward. So, Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Today recommends, represents, I would say, a second and third phase of the work that we've been doing as it relates to educational planning. Our first work is what was presented to the board back in the late fall. And that included the facility condition index for each school, those assessments. Then we also committed to the board that we would be addressing what I call two particular goals that I saw as the charge given to me by the board. One, to address reducing schools of hyper-poverty as we can over time. May not get there in the first sweep of this. And the second thing was to also deal with our real estate, our number of schools given declining enrollment. And how do we make sure we are operating appropriate facilities, first for the instructional programming. And two, that are sized appropriately as it based on enrollment. And so what you, and then there was a third piece related to this. There were some actions that we had asked the board to take, to, to give us some support. Not for the school year of eighteen, nineteen, but beginning the school year nineteen, twenty. One of those, the board took the action on and that dealt with changing the middle and high school pathway for St. Helena Elementary School. The board took action on that. That is effective this coming fall. The other two items, as, as Tracy and team will, will talk about in just a few minutes. Dealt with changing the boundaries for Camp Allen and Sewell's Point to address the new school that will be opening soon at Camp Allen. And making sure we had appropriate balances, relieving some of the overcrowding at Sewell's Point. And having space available particularly for more military-connected students in, in that school. And then the last piece is the recommendation we had to the board that deals with declining enrollment at Lake Taylor Middle School. Due to Southside STEM Academy next year recognizing its full middle school component. It will for the eighteen, nineteen school year be a total, fully operational K eight school. And so that's the work that's immediate for the board, those last couple of items that I mentioned. The other work that we are presenting, and not to be redundant, Tracy's gonna say similar things, but I think it's important, you know, to say this very clearly again. The board will not be asked to take any actions today for anything that's impacted the eighteen, nineteen school year. Say it another way. We're presenting a concept, some concepts around ways of addressing those two key goals that we saw as the charge from the board. Around hyper-poverty and rightsizing our, our school facilities. And so this is a, will represent a set of recommendations and options to the board. That will, of course, then the next steps will be how the board directs us in terms of gathering community voice around this and other pieces. But at this point, we needed to put before the board the, a master plan, if you will, of what we've been addressing and, and where we are. We know that there are always community sensitivities around changing boundaries, around utilizing schools for certain things. We, we understand all of that. But as a high-performing organization, we have to also sometimes do the very tough things too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy who has a flight at seven fifteen.
Well, if, if you can just pause one moment. So on the, regarding the items that we're gonna be asked to act upon, June 20th, outside of what we know, we'll talk about in a minute with Lake Taylor. I just wanna know if there's any questions or any clarification that any board members have with, with that portion.
And Tracy's gonna mention those in the presentation. He has that built in.
Okay. And then the other piece, I just wanted to remind us all that, all this while we're talking about the educational planning and the facilities and the enrollment and the budget and all the things that we've talked about. What the board has said and working with Dr. Boone as a governor's team, is this is all about driving positive academic outcomes for children. So as we're talking about facilities, we're talking about learning environments, we're talking about hyper-poverty, we're talking about research that addresses that. So, you know, we're here to serve positive academic outcomes for children and that's what this work has been about. So with that, Mr. Richter.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Dr. Boone, thank you, members of the board. If you would allow me some liberty to start on kinda flipping around a little bit. I've got a student here with me who participated in our Maury High School specification. But I think it's relevant that we start with Maury because I think it sets exactly that. It's not just Maury. This is a, this is something that applies across the division, that I think that is a, a good applicable process to live to. And so I have a presentation on the Maury Ed Spec to start, but I think that's a better foundation as I go on the facility master plan. Cause it's gonna explain some things that you saw in the facility master plan in your first draft. So if you would allow me that liberty to switch it around a little bit, on top of that, I have Eliza Madison here who's a junior at Maury High School and she participated in this process. And I don't want her to stay here all night either. And she's obviously like other of the students, very busy and she's getting ready for her finals and, you know, she's a, a great student, a, a great person. And I'm glad to have her here just to introduce the Maury High School Ed Spec tonight.
Hello. Thank you, Dr. Boone, Mr. Jordan and board members for allowing me to speak today. When first learning of my involvement in a planning process for a future vision of Maury High School, I was honored to be asked to take part in such an important process. Today, I again feel honored to speak to the school board and to have the privilege to speak to such distinguished individuals. Thank you for your time and allowing me to share my experience. To start off, I would like to touch on what made this opportunity so special. To work beside my own teachers, which was a humbling experience. These teachers are special. In the future, I won't remember how the classrooms or hallways looked, but I will remember the lessons they taught. Not only content lessons, but how to act like an adult and prepare me for life out of high school. To begin, I would like to explain that this process was based on adapting Maury's learning environment to meet the need of future students. It does not depend on the remodeling of the building, but rather focusing on how students can effectively learn in the 21st century. One idea we considered was how students envision the future relationship between teacher and student. Rather than depending on teachers for everything, we discussed how teachers could act as facilitators to students. Learning will become more student-driven, but teachers will act as guides for students to effectively master content. To cite an example of the future in learning environments, I was lucky enough to visit Callum High School in Virginia Beach. I was able to view the peer tutoring program, which allows students to participate as tutors and which counts as a class. This allows upperclassmen to form relationships with underclassmen that will aid the transition to high school and further the education process for both groups. I believe to implement such a program at Maury would allow students an advanced placement and honor classes. The opportunity to interact with individuals from standard classes. Not only would students that show promise be aided in mastering content, but tutors would learn how to teach content, which even furthers mastery. To elaborate, tutors would also learn responsibility and social skills. Also, I observed that classes were combined to employ an interdisciplinary method, such as biology and ninth grade physical education. I believe that this will allow necessary reference to life after high school, for skills must be applied to each other to succeed in jobs. However, while Callum's design was impressive, the school does not rise to Maury's standards in certain ways. One thing that is remarkable about Maury is the wonderful diversity that Callum so lacked. The diverse student body prepares Maury students for the future, as we will be prepared to interact with other individuals and to treat all with respect and equality. For example, my older brother, a Maury alumnus, participated in AmeriCorps as a tutor in a charter school in Newark, New Jersey. To students who show promise academically. However, half of his fellow tutors quit on account of not being able to empathize with what these students go through. My brother's preparation at Maury High School allowed him to be open-minded and better understand his students. This connection allowed a level of trust with students that other tutors were not able to gain. Maury High School cultivates a broader range of skills in students who are able to apply these skills in the real world. To end, I ask each of you to abandon all of your preconceived notions on how school should be. To keep an open mind for students just like me, who all desire an environment in which we can thrive in our modern day. Change is uncomfortable and we all resist change for fear of failure. However, progress is never achieved without a push for change. Each of you and I have the duty as citizens of Norfolk to act in the interest of future students. And as citizens of society, to set an example of the way learning should be carried out. In summary, the peer tutoring program could be the first step to employing other initiatives such as interdisciplinary practice. When teachers work together to instruct how to utilize two subject matters to approach problems or creating more adaptive space for learning. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jordan. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Reverend Haywood.
Madison is my neighbor. Last time I saw her, she was running around the community, a little girl. All of a sudden, she's grown up. I don't know what happened. Very good.
It was certainly an honor having her on our, on our committee. She is obviously well-spoken. But all the students, along with Eliza, brought a certain amount of accountability to us adults to focus on where our focus is. And it's right here. She puts it a lot better than I could ever put it and that's the reason she is here tonight. And so I thank her for being here. She doesn't have to sit here with me and be on camera the whole night like I will, but. But if you have any questions for her, she'll be here till the end of this presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll start with, so you have, there's a pretty thick document of slides, but I'm only gonna get through about forty of them. And there's only about twenty-five I really wanna concentrate on in some content because I think it really gets us to where we wanna go to. The driving questions of why do an educational specification, because it really does drive to how we should learn in the future, what the culture and space should look like in time. And that is not defined by a building necessarily. And we've talked about that several times, that it's not always capital and, and building solutions that allow this to happen. I think Eliza put that very well. However, part of an educational specification is, and again, moving on to the facility plan will be about making sure that the facility is not the obstacle in the way of learning. And so good educational standards apply to the renovations or new construction. And that being said, the, as we go through this process, what it was about was, it was about planning. This was never about, you know, contrary to a lot of beliefs still out there, that this is not about a building decision yet. Part of the recommendation of facility master plan will be to, to inquire with the board about a possibility of making sure we take the next step in evaluation of Maury High School. For a condition assessment and how the educational specification does overlay on the building. And then it educates the board a little more on what a final decision can be. So we didn't do a design. I mean, we have some concepts, but the concepts, as you're gonna see, can be applied in renovation or in new construction.
Mr. Richter, just one thing. So, you know, right now, we have scheduled about a hour and a half. You mentioned forty slides.
I'm gonna, that's the longest I'm gonna spend on one.
I just wanna make sure, so as part of your presentation, you'll have this update on the Maury High School specs. And then you also feel you'll have sufficient time to get through the second presentation?
Yeah. So, and that's why, and so I just wanted to, like, a couple of these. I just wanna make sure, we engage the community a lot. We were out there a lot. People saw us. We've been at board meetings. We've been on, you know, the. You know, the context of this is that, you know, the foundation of this is in the profile of the learner. And we want to make sure, what Eliza talked to is that we asked the group and we talked to the group, these were their words. You know, what is a day of a life of a Maury High School in twenty years? And as they look at it, what's fascinating to me is that all of those exist today, believe it or not. And so it's hard to push forward to twenty thirty-five. But what, where this comes in context is that, okay, so now how do we make our space adapt to this? And what are we gonna, what tools are we going to give to make sure that that happens? In the profile of the learner, we also asked about that teacher relationship. And you can, again, one thing, again, fascinating what you hear about this is that the last word that usually comes out is that they're the expert in content. Teachers today realize that they're not the only expert and that students get their information from a lot of different sources and they become a filter of that information. And once again, it's providing in an educational specification how we support that teacher-student relationship in that ever-changing environment and the role of the teacher. So, one of the foundations, again, is really committing to what Maury is about. And as you know, Commodore's learning by asking, showing, and sharing, class was the foundation of this. It truly was the foundation of this educational specification. But if you go into it, it really sets a foundation for a lot of learning. And again, what we believe is that as this process goes, it can be applied to a lot of different processes as we move forward. So asking, showing, and sharing are all about all the things that we do within the building that represent these actions. Profile of the learner, we don't forget that, from the Virginia Department of Education and the well-rounded student and what that's going to take in the Commonwealth to be there. We did a lot of research on, you know, international things that people are looking for too. And so, you know, the World Economic Forum talks to this idea of the twenty-first century school. And you've heard me say it several times, twenty-first century is not, I mean, we're twenty years in. It's time to stop talking about twenty-first century schools. And it's really start time to apply what these skills are. It's about learning in today's environment, the future environment. But this really does outline a really good platform for where students need to be and what we need to prepare for. You know, we asked the community about, we did a, what would typically might be a SWOT analysis, but we called it a SWOP, a Strength and Weaknesses and Obstacles and Prospects, because we wanted the community to help us identify moving forward with this building, because there's a lot of context to this building, not just on the education side, but the historical side, the architectural side, to really help in the future by identifying what these are. And you know what I found pretty amazing about this, I mean, that's one thing about this, is that, you know, the obstacles were historic and monumental facade and the prospects were historical. I mean, there's a conflict of the perspective of what that means, but there shouldn't be. There should be an embracing of what they both mean. Historical doesn't mean you're lacking, you're staying behind. It can mean you're moving forward. It's just how you apply what goes on in this document. So the group was tasked with giving us guidelines and providing parameters. The first were design principles for learning, knowing that, again, a lot of things that Eliza talked to, being student-centered, inquiry-based, interdisciplinary, collaborative, all the words that are pretty common, which you hear, but have to have definition. You know, in the complete document that you have, these have definition. And the definition isn't put together by your consultants. These are words by this committee that define each and every one of these that become the checklist for the design professional whenever they get to the building application. So when they go through and they identify this educational specification on top of the building, these requirements have to be met because that's the standard to go to. On top of that, you have design standards in this. And in design standards, it really gets to design. So building on tradition and being timeless. You know, you hear a lot of comments about community context. I mean, this building fits the context of the community. You know, being safe and secure and sustainable. But all of these things, again, just go back to the overall checklist of what the standard should go to. I think one thing I want to talk to really quick is the one about being adaptable and flexible. I think a lot of times we get confused about those terms. We think they're the same terms, but typically, they're not. You know, buildings that are adaptable means that it should be a structure that allows for change over years and decades. That's an adaptable building. But how do you get there? You know, you have to, buildings have to have non-load-bearing walls. We have to have some flexibility in our buildings. Designs are different. But even though the designs are different, we're getting back to the age of construction and design where our buildings are going to last eighty and a hundred years again. You know, we went through a long period of the forty, fifty-year building. We're out of that again. And so, but that adaptability has to change with education and you can't do it with solid-structure walls that aren't adaptable to anything without jeopardizing the educational environment. Flexibility, allowing for the ability to make changes to space configurations each day. So we learn a lot of different ways. There's a lot of different lesson plans. If teachers want to collaborate, you know, the days of learning in the hallway, because we don't have enough room in here, are gone. There's, we just don't do that. That's not the right way to teach education. And so we need to make these flexible environments, but also align that variety. One space shouldn't dictate what you do in a classroom. There's just no way that is a suitable way to do construction anymore. We should find multiple uses for rooms. When, you know, I've always said it, as a social studies teacher in my past, I could teach social studies in an art room, a music room, a whatever. I could do that. I didn't have the posters on the wall, but science teachers can't always teach in a history room or a math room. So, but we have to think about that creativity and that adaptability and the flexibility of space. So we really went to these models of learning where, where we went back to Dr. David Thornburg's landmark thesis on metaphors of primordial learning, basically defining that objective-based learning environments that we have. And basically, what it gets to is this idea that there are different things that occurred in a building. The campfire is where we do storytelling, water holes are where we share stories, where we kind of share our experiences and our background. A cave is where people need to be alone. They need to, students need that too, and they need a safe place to be alone. The real-world experience, so really applying life skills within the building and what that means. And then there's got to be a place to show and showcase, and not just art projects, but academic progress and speeches and plays and all of that has to be part of what you do. And so these primordial learning environments were really started to apply where it became a practice of now how space should be and what activities should be included in those. On top of those, you have other things that go into these. Like, there's the toolbox of things you need to teach and why those things in the room are important to teach. Water, storage, you know, those things sometimes are thought as an afterthought, but those are necessary parts of what we do every day in education. And so what we asked the group to do is take all of these kind of metaphors in there and start to apply it to, you know, the way they learn. So if I'm going into, into a content mastery space, what are the things I'm doing in that space? When, what are my, what are the environments I'm going to? Is it going to be a cave space? Is it going to be that life space? And when you start to define those things that are practiced within all the mastery things that you want to do, all of a sudden, now, the function is following, the form starts to follow that function instead of vice versa. It doesn't dictate. And so this became a real important foundation. You might know these as different names. A campfire is a classroom, or a watering hole is a conference room, or just go down the list. So what we wanted to do then was making sure that we just didn't use these foreign concepts or words that people don't know, but really apply it to where people see in their schools every day. So some examples, like a learning studio, which is a classroom, basically, that holds this many students and you can see all the activities that happen into it. And when the design professional sees this, he's going to make sure that the classrooms have these structures in them. And that's the checklist against the educational standard to the facility. And so there are several, learning labs. We did all kinds of different exercises with the group to kind of put together the exercise, who would be in them and the exercises that would, and the activities that would occur within them. Then the next exercise on top of that was then, once you get all these types of spaces defined, how can we put it all together to make sure that we're building these learning communities? And how do they fit together? And so we asked the group to put together a hundred and forty student learning community. That's like a team. If you would put together a team of twenty twenty-five, how would that look? And that starts to become a challenge because if you want to get all those skills and everything that was in our checklist for designs for learning in a hundred and forty students and not make your building, you know, eight hundred thousand square feet, how do we make it so it makes sense? So these are all the activities that need to happen and the space types that need to happen. And you can see, it starts to take a different look to it. And it starts to make a building look a little different than just hallways and rooms. So, so the space requirements, this is an important element. This is where kind of the rubber hits the road. The, what we might know as a program of requirements, or typically called that, the program of requirements defines the amount of space, how many spaces, the types of space, and really starts to put some application to it. What we discovered, and we worked with not only the group, but we called in all district leadership to go through this. Everybody that was a part of, including teachers, division-level staff. And look, we took them to task. We asked them about the future of learning. I mean, one specific example we talked about was darkrooms. And we really pressed the art instructor about are darkrooms necessary anymore in what we do? I do the same thing in career tech when we talk about auto-body. I mean, is it necessary to teach that in curriculum or is it just a hobby now? I don't know that answer, but we press on those as not to question their curriculum, but to make sure we're pressing forward in education and that we're delivering the right models. Now, what this shows, though, is that as you go through the building and spaces and the requirements for what we need to go to, it defines the capacity, which increases that capacity to eighteen hundred and ninety students, which isn't far above what it is now, but it's better space and can accommodate really eighteen hundred and ninety people. And it defines then, and defines the square footage. And if you see the square footage on this, the square footage ends up being, so you have to add in a lot of different things, including like gross factors and all those kind of things, but it's a little over three hundred thousand square feet for the student enrollment. In order to meet the requirements that are identified in the learning program. Now, the current building's around two hundred and sixty.
Okay.
And so, two, yeah, square feet, two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. And so what does that mean? Well, that's not for me to decide. But the educational requirement that the space is required to deliver the curriculum is identified by the division and the division experts and academics have identified the space needs for this and the right space needs for this. So that's what it's about. So it gets back to the spatial organization now, and again, now starting to apply these to, to kind of real world, where these are just a couple of examples where we started to do some organizational models and how you apply those on. And so you can see, for instance, in this, you would have, a learning community is this and these are the spaces within it. And so this is really the technical side of it, where the, where whoever comes in to evaluate the building will measure to these numbers, including then all the philosophical stuff that's up there. So again, these are just some examples of, and there's a storyboard. This is on Mike Ross', and I failed to introduce Mike and Jack, who are here from HBA, who are an integral part of this process. And I apologize for that. We just kind of jumped right in. But if you go into Mike's office, this is the whiteboard across, because of all the things that all the groups put together, we were trying to find common themes in them, because there's so many varieties in how you can do it. And so a long tedious process of making sure. But what it ended up doing was helping us really define how spaces can look. And so then we asked the group to go to two hundred and ten students or to four hundred and twenty students, and then how does those adjacencies look? So you can start to see now where this is, where this can be applicable into what we do in a current facility. It's just kind of reconfiguration of space. So it doesn't matter if it's a new construction or renovation. You can see there's just different configurations about how this all gets put together. Some examples of some area spaces where we're talking about the future of education, but when we're talking about career tech, we want, we want them to identify career tech spaces and what that means and the activities within them and the space types that are going to be necessary for that. The medical and health specialties program, one of the reasons for the expansion of the enrollment or the capacity of this building is to expand choice into specialty programs across the division. That is a key thing we're trying to do. And so expanding that capacity will allow for more opportunity for students to come in. We met with EVMS and we talked to them about this and the space types identified will help meet the needs of their objectives too. And then finally, the last piece I want to talk to you is that eventually you come to some building organization models. And it's really interesting that you can have the same conversation, be in the same groups and the same committees, and you can still come up with all these variations of how a building should look from thirty thousand feet. But what all of these do is share the common theme of that whiteboard across of what all the groups came up with, to make sure that there are organizational models within this building that can fit the building. Whether it's a renovation or a new construction, these models fit. But it's how you adapt those models. They may not look exactly like a W or a straight line, but they're going to follow the principles that you see in the organizational models and the attributes that this committee and the division has identified as a whole community group. So with that, that sets a foundation, that's, and I'm going to end on that. It does set, what this document does, and you can see it in front of you, and I think this is, and Mike and I will tell you both, we've done a lot of educational specifications together. I think to date, this is our finest work as far as how this starts to get applied. It is not a, it's not, it's not a directive. It is truly a guidance document for how to deliver educational specifications into a facility. So with that, do you have any questions on Maury as we go?
First, Dr. Boone.
I just want to make one statement. The work is powerful, so I want to thank Mike and HBA and Tracy and all who've been a part of it, and all of the Maury staff and the central office staff who were part of it. You all have heard me reduce it to this statement. You build a school from the inside out. This is the inside work. This is what it takes. Instruction should drive the functionality of a building and what you're trying to accomplish around this work. And this is what this process did. The work for the board going forward is, you know, how you want to do this, what it looks like, when that would happen. But again, we have now hopefully provided to the board the roadmap for how, what we need to have happen within the space to address, and I love the way Tracy just said that, we're twenty years into the twenty-first century to address contemporary and future high school needs.
I was going to come to Dr. Robinson, largely because he's our senior member of the board and has worked with the construction committee and been involved with a lot of iterations and discussions related to this issue as well as facilities overall. So I just wanted to know if you had any comments in terms of what got us here and any questions you may have, starting off.
Well, because of, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Tracy, your team did a fantastic job. This was a necessary next step in the process. As you know, we have aging facilities and they need to be addressed in a logical and outside-the-box thinking. And I appreciate this effort. It's imperative that, let me leave that for just a second. And I don't want to take a whole lot of time. But this is absolutely crucial in deciding what, started with Maury High School and the other high schools that are eventually going to be, need to be replaced over the years. This is, this is absolutely critical work to start thinking of what students need now and eighty years from now as best we can. So I'm very impressed with the process and look forward to watching this unfold over the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months and beyond. And it's going to be critical for the board members that are, that are going to be continuing on into the future. And the new board members coming on, they're going to need to be indoctrinated in this and onboarded with this as quickly and thoroughly as possible because there's a, there's a lot of information there to absorb and to, we don't want to lose momentum. We've, we've really had some challenges getting, just because of the enormity of the problem, of the issue, that getting, moving in the right direction. We don't want to move with haste, but we don't want to sit on the process either. So I think it's important that we bring the new board members up to speed as quickly as possible.
Questions? Ms. Wagner?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say that I'd like to commend the young lady. She did a marvelous job in her presentation and I applaud her. I think that the work in terms of Maury High School, I could see a lot of thought and put into the process. I guess my concern is, as I listen to you say that you've been in the community and you've included students, and I think that's beautiful. I think that's how it should be. But I'm, and everybody says I'd go back on my soapbox, and I will. I've got one more school board meeting after this and then I can just do whatever. So I'm going to say whatever.
Absolutely.
My concern is that, again, beautiful job. My concern is that we have a school that we're supposed to be beginning in September, the CTE program at Booker T. I'm troubled that a variation of this process has not been done with that community. I know that they have asked on several occasions to bring it to the community and share with them exactly the kinds of things that you did with this. And I'm sure this took a while to do. And I don't expect it to be this. And I don't expect it to be this in-depth. But I guess I did and I do expect respect of the community that we share with them, include them, involve them, the alumni, the community and the students in the process. Because we're looking at something that's supposed to get started in September and it's still to me very ambiguous in terms of what's really going to happen. So, everybody's up in the air, there are all kinds of speculations. One person's saying it here, one person's saying it there. And I just think that looking at this fabulous presentation that you did for Maury, that we at least do, because we don't, it looks like we don't have a lot of time, but we at least do somewhat of a variation to that school and that community as we move forward in terms of what's going to happen in September, in all fairness.
Ms. Wagner, if I can, if I can answer that really quickly. Part of the recommendation within here is absolutely to go through that with that community. And it's, it's critical. I think one of the differences is that, and there's no difference in the process to engage. Because, and I don't think it's less. I think it's as engaged. I think some of the guiding principles are there. We want to reinforce them for the community specific. There is a design of this building that was done far before I was told there was going to be a design of this building. Now, that being said, I still think there's opportunity. The design's not done until it's done. There's not even money to do this yet. I think there has to be a involvement of that process to make sure that there's an understanding of program, just like you said.
Right.
Which, again, that is, that's an academic venture that I don't go down until I'm instructed to apply it. But I believe that that community has to be engaged, just as in depth of this one, when that, we can start to do program in spaces that exist. But if we're going to do a new comprehensive high school and really do it and commit to that new construction, or even if the decision has to be we go back to a renovation mentality of it, we need this process at Booker T. It's absolutely essential in that community.
And I guess my concern is that the program is scheduled to start in September. Is that, am I, am I correct on that?
So, Mr. Jordan, if I may jump in.
I'll see.
Okay.
Um, like you, Ms. Wagner, I hate to go back to restate the history, but let me restate the history again of the CTE High School. The work had been underway for the CTE High School since about two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. It didn't just start. And there had been a wealth of studies, a wealth of visits to comprehensive CTE High Schools in Delaware, in Massachusetts and other places to look at just what Tracy described. What's the infrastructure? What's the internal organization that is required to deliver a strong comprehensive CTE High School? All of that work started pre me in this seat, pre you as a board member. The information was most recently in, well, in a comprehensive fashion, presented to the school board in the spring of two thousand and fifteen. Since my arrival here, I was charged by this board to advance that work to either making it happen or not making it happen. And so, the whole theory behind the comprehensive CTE High School, again, has been developed and supported over time, not only from Norfolk Public Schools, but also the business industry. There have been numerous folks who stayed at the table to help us think about the infrastructure that's needed for those, those four pathways that Ms. Gosian and I have presented to this board twice in the last eighteen months. And so, that was already developed. What transpired through this process then is the pivot, my term, to Booker T. as hosting that site in support of the city's goal for the revitalization of the St. Paul's Quadrant and what it meant for this work. But the board also charged myself and my team to look at STEAM opportunities for Booker T. in December. We initiated that work and around March, the decision was, was the consensus, the direction was given. And I know there could be a debate over whether there was a vote. That's not what I'm trying to entertain that, but I was given a direction by the consensus of this board to begin to work and think about this with Booker T. as the site. And so, that's where we've been since March. So, some of this earlier legwork was done outside of Lake Taylor High School, outside of Booker T., but really drawing upon the workforce needs of this region and the data that the group, pre us, were working toward and the research and everything that they had included. As I said to this board multiple times, my commitment is to a process, and like you said, this is the Maury process that we stopped, we talked about. When we get into the master plan for the larger district-wide facilities, Booker T. is part of, is included as part of that conversation. My commitment has been to begin the rollout and the conversations with the Booker T. work. But, and I said that I would begin with the school itself, and that's what I've done. My team and I met with the Booker T. instructional leadership team to talk about the core concept that had been in development since two thousand and eleven and that was given the nod to by a school board in spring of two thousand and fifteen. We've taken that to the, to the Booker T.'s IOT instructional leadership team meeting. We've also this week had a full faculty meeting with Booker T. Washington High School to discuss this work. And in each of those meetings, we were very clear that this is a framework for the work that starts. And that their voice was going to be critical in how we fully operationalize this over time. We also have left the door open for questions and conversations and concerns they have, and we were very clear that this was not a one and done conversation. But I always concluded those meetings by saying, and our next steps will be engaging the community around this. But you cannot start this work if you don't bring to the table the people who are going to be directly impacted by it. That's that current faculty and the voices of the students in that work. Additionally, we met yesterday, well, so last week, earlier this week, we met with the Lake Taylor High School faculty. Because what is solid in this is a commitment that had been made to Lake Taylor High School to support this work. We met with the, Ms. Gosian met with the instructional leadership team at Lake Taylor High School. Yesterday, we worked with the faculty to let them know that they too are not forgotten in this process and what we're envisioning and will be developing with them going forward. So, we've never had an intention of leaving anybody behind. But realistically, we've gotten to a point of shifting from planning Lake Taylor as hosting this in the fall without a new building, but with the shared facility of Lake Taylor High School and Norfolk Technical Center being paired campuses and bringing the faculties together. That's the exact same model that we are now operationalizing for Booker T. Is Booker T. has an initial, initial work, what goes on, and then pairing that with NTC. We will not be recreating heavy labs in existing schools, but whatever the design process and the funding and the support of the comprehensive CTE High School becomes, then that's when we will go deeper into the establishment of what the labs look like and what the technology and everything else is needed. In addition to the fact of preserving the arts as part of this. Ms. Gosian and I, along with the core architects that had been assigned this project, again, back in two thousand and eleven, visited Old Donations School recently to look at specifically their arts wing. So that as we think about a schematic, very similar to what has been designed here, when we think about a schematic, what does that look and feel like when we incorporate the arts so that Booker T. represents a STEAM entity? Going forward, we will be engaging the full community this summer, but the calendar has run out. If you think about it, we've turned this corner since March to be able to get to the fact of making sure that we could honor and, and work through what the board had tasked us to do. We did that with the programming and everything else. We continue to meet with the private partners who are part of this, the business community and the city to make this a reality. And so, we've continued to move this forward. No one is being ignored. There was not to be a new school for the fall, but we will continue with the IT Academy that we started and to pilot on this year at Lake Taylor High School at Booker T. Jesse Zamora is working closely with Dr. Cataldo and Ms. Gosian so that we can make sure we have the technology, the networking and the wiring that's needed at Booker T. to advance the courses in advanced placement computer science and those other pieces that are going to be critically necessary for standing up the initial CTE High School shared with two facilities. Have we gone the full scale on the marketing? No, we haven't. Because with this change, we had to have a story to tell. So, as we push all of this out and include the community and the, the school community and the community at large in this, we will then develop what the marketing will look like so we can begin to bring students into this work. What Tracy will talk about in just a moment is the boundary piece that we initially brought to the board back in late fall as to whether or not we would have a total choice school at Lake Taylor High School, whether we would have a educational or academic pathway, certain schools going there, or whether or not we would have a dedicated attendance boundary with the rest of the school being choice. That's what's in the next part of this work as we talk about what's happening. But I am going to push back on any conversations and the continued statements and insinuations that we're trying to give Booker T. short shrift. Because I can document very well, we are not trying to give Booker T. short shrift. We're trying to give them a stellar program and to bring them along in this work. But there is a process and this is the process that I've undertaken.
Well, I am so glad that we've shared the process this evening because.
And Ms. Wagner, respectfully, I've shared it before.
You have additional questions?
No, I have no additional, I'm just saying that I'm.
And we're going to revisit that as we go forward because I have lots of thoughts as well. But I want to see if there are others that have questions on the first part of the presentation before we finish out the second piece.
I do have a question, I'll just give you.
Reverend Heywood?
Just the question is, is how, how is this specific exercise applicable to other future secondary schools in Norfolk?
So, I think the foundations in, in, in the philosophical ideas of, of the contents of learning and the relationship of learning and the design of learning. I think all of those are relevant, community context, safety and security. I think those are all relevant. Where it gets adapted to site-specific is that I believe that when we go to the high school for their project, they define what those means for them. That's where it changes a little bit, but it sets a foundation. And honestly, the primordial activities don't change a whole lot either. I mean, really, I mean, we've talked about that before, about how learning has stayed constant. It's what we learned to that has changed. And so, that stays stable. And so, I think that sets a foundation across the board.
Template is set that we can apply it when we go to the CTE school and such.
Absolutely. And that's, I will tell you, I'm super excited about a CTE school because there's a lot of great stuff that happens in a building like that.
Reverend Heywood?
Again, I want to thank Eliza for her presentation, great, great presentation. Tracy, I'm looking at the pictures of the metaphors such as the watering hole and the cave. I mean, these are some very attractive pictures with the lighting and the warmth and the colors and the ceilings and all of that. They're, they're beyond imagination. I mean, the average person wouldn't imagine these spaces. And I think they're very attractive and I think that if the public could see this type of thing, they would understand what you're talking about. And so, it occurs to me that what we see here, the attractiveness of it, also is going to, there'll be a competition between the traditions, wanting to hold on to traditions, and this. And so, I, I don't know how the public would be able to see the, these spaces because they certainly can't imagine them. They're, they're very attractive. How will you, how do you propose to bring that forward so that, so that people can be able to see that and get excited about it?
So, part of the process was we did school tours. And then again, I think one of the criticisms from the community, and we'll validate it, and it is what it is, but we didn't go visit a historic building, but we gave them opportunity to go to, our committee to go to websites of schools that are historic renovations that are doing the same thing. So, Eliza's example of just going to Callum. There's four other schools they visited to see those types of spaces. We can't take the community to all those buildings certainly. However, what I think part of this is, is really showing people that there are great examples around the country of renovation or new construction of spaces that work, that don't look like a traditional classroom that kids are learning in, in all, in all environments. So, whether they're in the urban core or they're in the suburban or in the country. There are schools doing this all over the country and spaces just like this. I think part of our task as we go forward, working with the community about whatever the final decision on this building will be, will be to take them through that, to show them that here's an application of what a watering hole or a cave space will look like for a student. And I think that really draws them in. And I think the examples that they went to when they visited schools, they said, oh, that's what that means. To your point, you got to see it, you got to experience it. What I think this does, what I love about this document, it doesn't, it doesn't trap a design professional into a certain way of going. They can use their creative skills still to design buildings that fit your school and the context and neighborhoods they're in. But they've got some flexibility now to do that because of how we've described space.
And so, when I think about the Booker T. community, that when those, these types of designs are presented to the community, they will become excited about this.
Yeah, I mean, especially when you're talking about that life, those life skills type of spaces. And I'm going, the one thing I should point out, if you don't go through a process, like is a building like Maury, that three hundred and six thousand explodes to three fifty, three sixty, three eighty very quickly because what you pay attention to is all the activities that are shared and the adjacencies and the flexibility of space. The same thing will happen with Booker T. We're going to be able to use space we never imagined we could use space for. Therefore, we won't have to build a building that's five hundred thousand square feet and waste money on space that we'll never use right. We can really get it right and still be more effective and programmatically applicable than it ever has been.
And this one last thought, in particular in the case of Booker T., to both be able to incorporate these learning environments like what we see here, but also to bring the historical aspects of African-American community into these types of environments. To me, that, that is going to be a really, and it'll make Booker T. a school that's a cut above all the other schools that are doing the same kind of work. So, you know, I'm kind of excited about the possibilities that are there for the school.
Absolutely. The mountaintop piece is something Mike introduced into this because we really feel like that's a critical piece. And when you get to a career in technical school, that showcasing and seeing what kids do every day, you know, glass walls where people see what people are doing, those kind of things. You can't help but be excited, yeah?
Ms. Dr. Robinson, you've done, Ms. Bassin, Dr. Gabriel, still? Okay.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. If I heard correctly, you know, our, the size of our specialty program has been largely dictated by the capacity at EVMS. And I'm curious about in your conversations with that, with them, if that capacity, the projections have increased or will increase in the future to expand that program?
I think it's a good question. I think that as far as a projection goes, a projection typically in a specialty program is dictated by funding and space, not by demographic. And so, EVMS is excited not only the opportunity of what they offer, but what can be expanded. And not necessarily to expand into their campus, but even to resource into the building, but having the right spaces to do that in the building. So, we can expand program as, as the medical field will expand and different programs will come to light for need, this building will allow that to happen, yeah?
All right, great. And can you describe how equity is taken into account to the design of the space?
Well, it's the planning for the space. We haven't designed it totally.
Well, not, the planning for the space, that's what I mean.
You know me and the word equity. It's a kind of a funny term. I don't think equity is one-to-one. Equity is access to learning and the availability of, yeah, and that's what it is.
That's what I'm.
And that's what this is about. And so, to afford opportunity, because any school you go to, you know, whether it's Norview or Granby or anything, will have spaces that accommodate the programs that are there. Just because you have a STEM room in one room, in one building, doesn't mean you need it in another classroom, in another building if you don't have STEM in it. So, I think that what this allows it to do, with the exception of the program requirements, but one of the things that we wanted to make sure was that we don't abandon the division-wide vision of programs. So, we're not going to abandon the division-wide art program that is going to be applied. Now, there's. Now, there's specialties that happen within each building for art. But we don't abandon the idea that the division has a vision for art. That's just one example. And so we make sure that we adapt those spaces to those visions out there. Does that make sense? It's, it's hard to get to that equity because I believe it will.
Yeah.
As you start to apply it to the actual renovation or new construction design.
Right, right.
And I think the other thing with equity too is we then can promote our specialty programs. Which goes back, you know, the work that the board did a year ago, January, as it relates to how do we strengthen our specialty programs? How do we increase access? You know, we've gone to the common application and those things that we're trying to put out there. Then we will have the opportunity to accept more students. Because in the shared pieces, as Tracy was saying, you know, what, what are the other health careers? That are available to all students if we have different space to make that happen? And so that's part of the vetting. But again, we've, we've, you know, his team, Mike and Tracy and the team there have worked with EVMS. To get an idea of what that looks like. The limitation dealt around a lab that EVMS has. And so, you know, do we look at recreating that lab? Or do we look at the other career offerings that won't require as much lab space? So those are all the ways that we think about it. But using the direction that the board has given us through the conversations around specialty programs is what we did. When Ms. Burke came in with us and our initial conversations about this. We started this work with the idea that the core of Maury focused on the health specialty program. And how do we build everything out from that? And that stayed true throughout this process.
Dr. Gabriel? Oh, were you, Ms. Bassine?
Well, I was just going to give an example and this is probably the easiest one because it's, we were at a conference on Friday. And it was actually around Title IX, but it was talked about sports equity. And so an example that was given was, you know, is the, is the girl softball field and the baseball field, are they equitable? So the things like that, you know, and then my question and looking through and trying, you know. I've got to read this, you know, a few more times, but it's a, it's got a lot of great information here. But were students with disabilities included in having, you know, you talk about the cave there. But do we have sensory or sensory spaces and things like that? Like, are they part of the vision and making sure that that vision is also, is also here? So that's.
I think you'll find that in the details of like specialty areas within the document.
Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you.
I just really want to commend you and the administration for including the teachers and students. And really valuing their input because as Eliza eloquently put it. And I'm going to just summarize real quick. There are, these students are noting skills that are not even going to be measured or tested. But they are very important when they get out into real life. And it isn't until we hear from them and their experiences and because they're so close to the job market and careers. That we get that feedback. So I'm just really grateful for that and appreciate it. And I know that we're going to apply that as we go to the next buildings, the next ones that we develop. Next steps, what are the next steps?
The next steps, and that comes kind of in, in what I'm going to talk about here. But the next step is that we should move forward with the idea of, of looking at a design professional to come in to apply this to the current facility. To see what the actions of the facility really have to be. Because again, I'm, I'm, was not and will not have the task of deciding what you're going to do with this building. There has to be data that supports that. It will come down to how much of this, you may not be able to apply all of this, of the, of the document into the existing building. It might be about cost, it might be about, just go down the list. It might be about, it might be, at, at the end of the day, it could be a mixture of a renovation and new construction project. Because you can apply some of it and not some of it. But at the end of the day, somebody's going to want to know how much this thing costs. And it comes down to you serve a division and not just a school. And I think that that has to come into play. Now, when you speak to the community, they, they're passionate and they should be. I'd be disappointed if any community wasn't passionate about their school. But, but we have to sort, and this is a tough thing to say, I know it is. We have to kind of sort that emotion to, to fact and then figure out the balance of the two. Because they both play a part in this. So you have, I think the next stage has to be to, to get someone in there to overlay this to see. If you can apply this to the current building or if there's some sort of mixture you can do to come to a decision on this. Because even in the facility plan, I'm going to tell you, the number that I'm going to give you tonight is a wrong number. It's a wrong number. Because I don't know the answer yet.
So Dr. Boone, do you have timing as to when you would try to find the design professional?
Not yet, because again, we need to get into the other educational planning piece.
Okay.
You know, we just finished the budget cycle with the council. And they talk about setting aside some funds in a lockbox for school construction. So right now, we are talking about two schools, two high schools. And we haven't even discussed what needs to happen with elementary schools. Appreciate it that we're about to open five, the fifth of the five PPEA. Even though the federal government is paying most of the cost for the fifth one. But that's where some of the next steps are, what are the priorities the board is going to set around this? You know, we're hoping that with the conference of CTE high school, that it will be a public-private partnership. And some private funds that will help us in the development of that. That has been the, the message and the intent around that. I can tell you at the table where we are and the work that we're leading forward on this, that's still the goal. But do we have the cash in hand right now? No, we don't. And so we need to look at the entire master plan concept. And then the board is going to have to give us a direction as to which priorities you want us to begin to develop. And then we can put the rest of it to it.
So I've just a couple of comments. One, I need you to miss your plane.
No, don't worry about that, there's planes in the morning. There's planes tomorrow afternoon.
And I was cleaning earlier today and I found my elephant that was underneath the dresser. Because I, you know, when we do our school board training, we often talk about elephants in the room.
Yeah.
And so I brought it because I kind of expected elephants to be discussed. And most people know I'm comfortable with discussing elephants, that's why, nobody likes me. But on, on a serious note, in working on the agenda. It was a conscious thought on my behalf not to do the Maury specifications first. Because the elephant in the room is, is that the perception is that in some realities.
Mm-hmm.
That Maury gets all the attention.
Mm-hmm.
Maury is the signature school. And so anytime we talk about Maury first, then everybody else feels neglected. So we've, we're scheduled to end about six thirty. We're an hour into the presentation and we've talked about Maury and the whole Booker T. thing. Which I kind of anticipated we would end up doing, but that's why I wanted to talk about the big picture.
Mm-hmm.
And then come and talk about the, the Maury Ed specs. Other thing I just want to mention is last month, I drove to Rochester. For my niece was graduating from Rochester Institute for Technology. Her older brother graduated from there, I think it was four years or three years earlier. And I can remember driving up for that graduation and I was on the phone with Mrs. Doyle and Dr. Houston for about half the trip. Because at that time, the school board got into discussions about whether or not we were going to tear down Maury. And it made the front page and the whole place went berserk. And, and at the time, we were just trying to deal with the fact that at Maury, unlike most of the other schools, at least high schools right now. There was actually some concern that walls may fall and people may get hurt. And, and so four years of work and discussion is where this piece has evolved. And some would say that it's four years too late. As Dr. Boone was saying earlier, we know, at least I know. That whether it's Booker T. or many other schools, we know we have inequities.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why we passed an equity policy. The conversation with the community, all that is intended.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of different scenarios. We're going to do that, we've heard it loud and clear, we've committed to doing that, we are going to do that. We have a, I think I asked you the last time you were here to restate that I remember being in a meeting with you. And nobody wanted us to talk about Booker T. and CTE. And, and there were some concerns there. But as we move on into the, the larger piece, not only, you know, as school board members, we have responsibility for the whole piece.
Right.
For the whole division. And I think it's important that we keep that in mind. And not just, not turn this into a one school versus another school.
Absolutely.
Dynamic. But also how do we advance where we know we have gaps? So we know we have a gap with our specialty programs. This board has discussed it, we had a whole full day retreat on it. And we said that as a result of the gaps, where we saw specialty programs that were operating at one level at three high schools. And operating at a lower level at two high schools, we're going to do something about it. So the STEAM program, the CTE program, the looking at the military science program. All of that was about the gaps that we saw and closing the gaps under existing structures. So the work that's been going on around that has been about closing those gaps. And now we're talking about facilities. And we know from the facilities index that you did, that there are some facilities that score at one level. And there are other facilities that score at others, and I know you're going to speak to that. But it would be very helpful, I think, as you move forward to talk about the whole, the impact. You know, as I looked at the Maury presentation, I had questions about the CTE space and what impact that might have on choices and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
But this is a process. And, and we're going to push forward with the process if it's the will of the board to push forward on the process. But I've been through so many of this and I think it's important. And I think it's about the work and I think we have to be committed to doing what's right for all children, all staff. And I think the passion is, is, is important. And I'll just leave it at that, if you would be so kind. And if I need to give you a ride someplace.
You're good.
I'd be glad to give you a ride.
So that, I mean, that's where we get to is that the idea that this is a, a division wide plan. That comes on, from a lot of different levels. I mean, first of all, the introduction of this is the presentation is for discussion only. There's no pollinating, this is step three of two hundred and ninety. We have to make sure that we go in through to make sure that we're, that we're doing this the right way. Two recommendations, the board will vote on June twentieth, will not be in this presentation. We've talked about them in previous board discussions on November first and April eleventh. On Camp Allen Sewell's point, about a boundary change. You'll have information on the numbers of that before you make the vote. So they haven't changed a whole lot, but we want you to see those. And that will, that action will be in, put into place when the facility is completed. Lake Taylor Middle School conversion to a K eight facility from Fair, from Fairlawn and Poplar Halls. As discussed in this presentation, will be discussed in this presentation, again, not for the eighteen, nineteen school year. That would be for the nineteen, twenty school year. So we can implement it this year, enrollment won't allow that to happen and then first, you know, just logistics. So those are going to come to you. But tonight's presentation is about the overall plan that addresses a lot of other things that have to move forward in a progressive way. When you're doing a long, it is a long range facilities plan, let me emphasize that. It's a long range plan. First of all, funding will dictate what you can do. You know, with interesting discussion I had with, with Dennis today, and we've talked about this before. But any good business kind of decision you make, if you do too much at once, you can damage. And so it has to be thought through. When you talk about next steps, the master plan is about next steps. It's about, okay, how then will we spend the next four to six weeks then? With this in our hand to say, okay, how long will it take? What's it going to be necessary to take step one to do this? So is it building Booker T. first because I can't do anything to another high school unless I have some swing space? I don't have any room to put high school kids when I'm renovating or replacing buildings. So what are the sequential events that have to happen to make this happen? So I think that the next steps to that will be that. Somebody told me to abandon the stool, so I abandoned the stool. But this is still about facility planning, there's a lot of different pieces to this. There wasn't anybody in here, but I'm being told to move on. That being said, you can see there's a lot of different components to this and, and you know what? They're, they're circular for a reason. Because they're always moving and they fit in together and they roll together and they bounce off each other all the time. And so master planning isn't as simple as you make a decision on a building and nothing else happens. There are so many influences and so much domino effect that a simple solution doesn't exist. And I'm going to tell you, the correct solution in today's world doesn't exist because things will change in the next five, ten, fifteen years. The St. Paul quadrant alone tells us they're going to be changed, that we're unaware of yet. And so we have to add some flexibility into the planning that we do. So the planning objectives that we have, and we've seen these before, but I think these are going to be important. To address excess capacity at the elementary, middle school level. I watched your city council meeting, I saw them go at you about this. And you know what, we're going to address it. And if, if they want to see reduction, I'm going to show them reduction tonight. And because that's what they've asked for. So we're answering a response to governance because we have to. But it's a good thing to do. And, but we have to do it for the right reason, as Mr. Jordan said. If it advances the educational progress of our division. Address imbalance of live-in enrollment and facility utilization. We have buildings and you're going to see the data in there. Address imbalances of economically disadvantaged student percentages. We're going to see this in here and review continuity feeder patterns. This is a big deal in this one, this is huge and this will take time to do. But address aging facilities with high dollar amounts needed for capital renewal that don't exist, that dollars don't exist. So I'm going to show you examples because I think that there is, there is reality in the funding that occurs. The idea that, and again, when, when told that we're given this much money, what did you do with this money? And to say, and again, we are grateful for any dollar amount that comes into this division for facility improvement, for operationals, we do. But understanding what those dollars mean, ten million dollars was a nice bonus into what we typically get for improvement. But ten, ten million is a dent on a really big car. And so we have to take into consideration what those dollars will mean. And, and how, how far those dollars will go and the impacts of those. So the first thing you talk about is enrollment, we've been in decline. But I think the important thing for this one is, is that note on here, and the reason I just did the grade level. Is that note on here that the high school enrollment isn't going to decrease in the next five years. It will continue to increase, remember, we've got a bubble that's sitting in that eighth, ninth grade year. That's got to push through before these lower enrollments come in. And so we don't have capacity, we never had capacity at the high schools. And so we need to maintain that, the level of capacity. Even in, if there happens to be a capital construction program, we need to maintain a certain capacity. We do have decline in other areas. And so what this report has to do is, is really take those in consideration. Notice that every slide has draft on it. I think that's critical because everything is draft, nothing's in stone, it's a lot for discussion. The capacity and live-in enrollment, we, we talk about this a lot. Where the geography of boundaries and what that means. But these are the live-ins that we have for the live-in utilization and how many seats we really have empty. You know, the elementary school level, we've talked about eighty-five percent as optimal. We're just a little below that, we're not far from that. But that equates to about thirty, four hundred seats that are empty, but they're not all in one school. They're, Dr. Boone addressed this really well. Is that when you drop an enrollment, they don't come from one building, they're all across, and so how do you balance that? We do know the middle schools are still, continue to be underutilized. And how do we address that through not just capital programs, but through academic and, and grade configuration? And then the chart at the bottom kind of gives you an idea of where they fall in the range of, you know, how many are above a hundred percent utilization? Some that fall in that right range and some below that. And so that, that is one piece. So you've got enrollment and you've got then the capacity and utilization of facilities. Economically disadvantaged, now this chart is better, it's clearer in your report. But looking at the division wide average of sixty-five percent. What we looked at was the variation from the grade level on the chart to the right to the division wide average per grade level. Now, we did, you know, there's some schools that have the three eight or the K eight that we just put into elementary just because. You start messing with data like that, this would be a big, big page. But it follows the same concept, the numbers don't shift a whole lot. But you can see the variations of economically disadvantaged from the division wide average. There has been a push and, and board policy for this diversity to happen. But understand, the math tells me that I can't get every school fifty-fifty. It'll, I mean, I think that's when, when people hear that, and I, I don't think everybody thinks that. But I still think there's people out there that believe that that means fifty-fifty. The division wide numbers tell me I can't get to that. The division-wide numbers tell me I can't get to that. So what we try to do is we be representative. We're representative of our division as best we can. We don't overtax bill, we don't overtax with any way of the spectrum. Whether it's program, economics, anything like that, we make sure we try to find balance. That's why this is important because this is going to be impacted by what we do. And again, the challenge in this is that at the elementary grade level, without extensive boundary process, you won't get there. You would have to go through a major boundary process throughout the division to figure out better balances. So where we started in the past and where we continue to go here is that secondary enrollment where we can really start to. That secondary enrollment is where you can start to push both ways. By feeder patterns and then seeing the adaptations to boundaries that are gonna have to happen because of geography and because of the geographic things and demographic things that happen in the division. So this was a, this was a part of it. The feeder pattern analysis. I think this is one of the most fascinating things when we get into why feeder patterns are important. Continuity, social, academic accountability are critical to success. As you go through and you see the number of elementary schools that feed into the number of high schools or middle schools, you're going to see that there's a lot of variation out there. So for instance, in the number of elementary schools I have that feed those middle schools, twenty-three elementaries feed a hundred percent into middle schools and fifteen into high schools. That means they go different directions. The problem is, is that we have some that go to three different middle schools and three different high schools at, in their career. So we take an elementary school and we tell them that you get about six years together. That's all. That's what you get. You're gonna split up. You're gonna go to different directions. Now, there's some advantages and disadvantages to that. Now, see, we're in a division that offers choice. So feeder patterns don't always dictate what's going to happen in a building. But they set the foundation for how we track. Accountability is a critical thing here. If we wanna find out where there are successes and failures as you go through the academic career that you're in. It is, we need to figure out good pathways. But if I'm sitting in a high school and I'm trying to figure out why that tenth grader is three years behind his reading average and they went to four different feeder patterns, who, what, where does, where's the accountability at? And it's hard to track that when I've got this spider web of feeder. And so as you look then at the next chart, which is, which is hard to read again on the screen, but the, the important thing is to look at the right. And you can see, I'm gonna point it out right here, Coleman Place. When they leave elementary school, they go to four different middle schools and to three different high schools. So again, I'm gonna look at the students at Coleman Place and I'm gonna see, you know, this, they love their school, they love that, and then when they leave, do they still have that continuity? The social continuity, the academic continuity. I mean, they're going into three different middle schools that likely have three different programs. And they might not be wanting, going to the program they want. And so trying to figure out just geographically how we fix that, then to allow the choice to occur is trying, trying to, where we're, we're trying to get with this. This is why I think this piece of data is critical in, in our analysis. We do a live-attend and this is just the example of the high school live-attend, and you've seen this chart before. We know how many students historically stay in a boundary and leave a boundary. And we can track historically what happens there. Now, once again, a lot of times dictated by program, funding, you know, even transportation sometimes about how these students can transfer across. But in order to make sure that, that this facility plan addresses true choice, and that's true choice. Not that we have specialty programs out there that only a select can get to. That we need to make sure that they're prepared in the right pathways. So remember a couple of years ago, we introduced this idea of a neighborhood and choice pathway. That's what this gets back to, is the idea that you have a clear pathway in your geographic pathway to get to where you wanna go. But if you want a choice, you've got plenty of choice. And you've got it at the elementary grade level, you certainly have it at the middle grades level, and you have it and you're working toward a better high school delivery model of this. And so, but first of all, we gotta clean it up at the bottom. We gotta make sure that they have a pathway that they understand going in. And so when a parent walks into the division, they know where they're going. They know that if I stay in my, in my pathway, that's a geographic pathway, this is where I'm gonna go. We align the programs, we get that right. But then they're gonna say, you know, my, my student all of a sudden has this art inclination. They found out in second grade and they're going, oh my gosh, Booker T.'s gonna have this great art program. How do I get them in that pathway? That's the key here. We're no longer going to make diversity through geographics, to, to, to geography, and I'm gonna explain that in a minute. We're gonna make it through choice. Because there's areas that we wanna make through choice, but we wanna make sure it's accessible to everybody. Because once again, you can live in parts of this district and not have access for many different reasons that we can't control, but we can help and assist in that. So the next piece of that then is the condition. Identified four hundred and ninety-one million dollars of priority one through four deficiencies. That's half a billion dollars. We're just gonna call it half a billion. Twenty-six of the forty-four excess, exceed what we call the two-thirds rule, which tells us in accounting principles that once it exceeds two-thirds, the dollars you spend on those buildings have shorter lifespans so they become candidates for replacement. Now, that doesn't mean they are. Now, this doesn't include Maury High School because it was not assessed. For whatever reason, I don't have the reason, but the, but we had the process. Yeah, we knew the process had to go through this, but it does include MTC. So you know that. So you know where the numbers are. Now, for matter of discussion, in this presentation, I have assigned a deficiency, capital deficiency to Maury of forty-nine million. And the reason I did that, it's almost the exact same square footage as Lake Taylor. And so I just did the same square footage, so I had a number to base it off of. And so with the same amount of square footage, I gave it about a fifty million dollar deficiency because that's Lake Taylor. But that's for matters of discussion right now. And until we get that number, I just needed a placeholder for, for discussion period, uh, purposes. So let's look at that in a funding mechanism, which again, I find to be part of the bigger part of this discussion. In the next school year, you're going to get six million dollars capital deficiencies. I wanna show you what six million dollars means. That if you were to take your capital renewal, and if you recall the report of the FCI report conducted by HBA. That they, they suggest that the conditioned deficiencies can increase two to four percent a year, depends on the area, depends on the age. I would say that you probably are above that two percent escalation just because of where your deficiencies are. They're gonna escalate a little quicker. But I left it at two percent. Now, in the current five hundred and forty million, I added Maury back in. If I go across and I escalate that over time and then I take the six million and I say that city council is gonna raise that three percent every year, so one percent about that. You're gonna spend a total of seventy million dollars for capital renewal in the next ten years, but you will end up forty-three million worse off than you are today. There's a negative impact by six million dollars because the escalation is far greater than even at a percent higher because the number is so big. And so what you're going to do is you're gonna end up being forty-three million dollars in the hole after spending seventy for a net one-ten. So although six million is good, you see in the capital renewal that without some replacement or taking buildings offline, you're gonna be almost half of, again, fifty mi- you know, fifty million dollars worse off. That's, again, somebody told me once not to say this, but that's just math. That's just showing you escalation and dollar value. And so six million is a good investment and we're, and we're grateful for that. But I want people to know what that means in capital renewal. Unless, again, we replace some buildings or take buildings offline to reduce this five forty. So that leads me into the recommendations. Because those are the key components to this that we know. The recommendations, let's start with capital improvement projects. Replace Booker T. Washington High School with a comprehensive CTE facility. Now, the current replacement based on the current design is fifteen hundred. Now, the building will obviously be built for expansion because it should and designed for expansion. And because I think in time, you'll need more space. But in this, the feeder pattern will provide approximately five hundred students for the fifteen hundred capacity. I'm gonna show you what that means in context in a minute. But the cost of eighty-eight million, which means a hundred and eighty square foot per student, and if you go back, just again, give you context. The, the high school for Maury, which is a typical kind of square foot per student, is somewhere between that hundred and sixty and hundred and sixty-five range. So you can see there's more square footage per student to accommodate for those large learning spaces. And the cost is actually escalated beyond a typical construction high school. Because you're gonna see power need, technology need, and equipment need that's going to increase over that. So that's an eighty-eight million dollar investment in today's dollars.
Today's dollars.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
In today's dollars. So at three hundred and three dollars, and I will tell you, the market right now is a strong five percent escalation. Strong five percent. Even in recession times, about, the average has been about five percent. So just keep adding five percent the longer we go. Now, the second one is.
Before you.
Five percent. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Before you move, um, I'd just like to make a recommendation on your language for clarity purposes.
Okay.
That what you are recommending in option one is to build a new Booker T. Washington High School. That will be the home of the comprehensive CTE facility. Replace, replace does not mean remove.
Nope, doesn't mean that. I, thank you for that.
What your language is.
Yep.
You're recommending that we build a brand-new Booker T. Washington High School that would be the home of the comprehensive CTE school. Right now, just on building pieces alone at an estimated eighty-eight million dollars.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is our recommendation.
Alright. I think it, again, put it in context, about forty-five million dollars of deficiencies in that building, that's just mechanical, electrical. That doesn't include educational improvement, which in that building would be a thirty to thirty-five percent increase. So we're talking about a seventy-five million dollar renovation project versus eighty-eight million. Again, that's a two-thirds decision that you come to. I know the building isn't that old, but because of the, the, the amount of funding that's been put in for any of our schools, not just Booker T., it has, the deterioration has, has escalated it further. So that's the recommendation. Thank you for that clarification. And it would be on the same site. I wouldn't propose moving it. That's another clarification.
And we've discussed at previous meetings that we are in the process of assessing the site for us.
How we do that. That's correct. So the next one would be to renovate or replace Maury High School, and again, because I don't have all the data for this, I just put both on here to make sure. But the, the replacement would be for the eighteen ninety. The feeder pattern would provide approximately fourteen fifty. Again, that's in the projection for the live-in. Um, with an eighteen ninety capacity, which is, again, much like Booker T., allows us and affords us the ability to expand specialty programs. Um, the replacement costs about ninety-five million and again, it's a hundred and sixty-five square foot per child at three hundred and three. It's just a bigger building. That's why it's more. In this, the renovation cost, and again, this is why this number's not, I'm gonna tell you, it's not right yet because I don't know the answer. But if I did the, the same equivalent to Lake Taylor, which is the same square footage of forty-nine million, and put the additional forty thousand square foot on it, three hundred and three dollars a square foot, that's where you get sixty-one point five. Now, what the forty-nine million does not include, it includes no educational improvement to space in the building. It is all of everything that goes on to make the building operate, roof, windows, facade, all that, foundation.
Sorry.
Just to add, anybody that's ever done a renovation on a house knows once you start cutting into walls, you're gonna find stuff that you didn't know existed. So that number goes up dramatically.
I, I mean, again, I would anticipate that, and again, any, any renovation's tricky. And so I think that's why that analysis has to happen. Is this number, again, I think that a lot of renovations that I have seen equal or exceed the, the new construction cost because of those reasons. And the, just in adapting space. Again, educational adequacy and appropriateness is thirty or thirty-five percent add-in that you, we don't, we haven't measured yet. So, once again, so note, but, so you're looking at the capital investment of two high schools in this recommendation. Um, the result is a reduction of capital deficiencies by approximately ninety million dollars though, and it could be more. The increase of program capacity for health and medical specialty programs and career and technical is a huge thing in this. Is that the expansion of specialty programs really allows you now to offer a lot of different pathways. I think a short answer, Mr. Jordan, to your question about the career tech spaces at, at Maury, they're intended to serve kinda what's there. Not necessarily to pull away from other programs. And so it's just that support of those. But it doesn't mean that in time, what we shouldn't think about is that should programmatically, because we never know how programs will work. Well, someday, all of our high schools have kind of seed-based career technicals that they can get a more in-depth program if they wanna go, like they do currently at the, at the Career Technical Center. Booker T. could service that, and it doesn't have to be from eight o'clock to three o'clock. I mean, I think that's how we think about the expansion of this and how we grow capacity without bricks and mortar. So I think that this is a great result of this. The ninety million of deficiencies gone is huge. And that's a, you know, that's one-fifth. That's a big deal, twenty percent. The next ones are, continue to be in capital improvement, and the reason I call these capital improvement is because I think that there needs to be investment in facilities when you do this. But the conversion of Lake Taylor Middle School and Ruffner indicate facilities. Now, I say K eight, but I'm gonna include pre-K as a parenthesis here. And the reason for that is that there's some discussion that has to happen about the space types and what we really wanna do with pre-K. Not to exclude them. So in my conversation, I may be jumping pre-K to K, but in the Lake Taylor discussion specifically, I'm gonna stay with K eight. Because right now, there's not the space or the capacity to get pre-K quite there yet. Um, so we'll have to figure out what that solution might be. Again, this is a consolidation of Fairlawn and Poplar Halls and using Fairlawn as a repurposed building. But the closure of Poplar Halls, um, the, the condition of Poplar Halls to the square footage is, and again, to the facility, not to the school, not to the people. It is one of the worst-conditioned facilities in the division. So that would mean, but renovations, I'm, I'm recommending that part of the six million of the initial investment should go to Lake Taylor for those educational improvements when those kids get over there. We need to renovate some space for kindergarten space. We need some, some updates to the educational space, so hoping some of those dollars will go there. Now, the next one is something that you haven't seen yet is making Ruffner a K eight building. This is, this has traditionally been the lowest utilized building in the division. It is a great bones building. I mean, this is a great bones building, and it's a building that should remain. But in this, what we would do is we would combine Chesterfield Academy and the Tidewater Park K five. Now, follow my lead here on this. Remember, we divided up those grade configurations. But we would look at that boundary that was Tidewater Park and take the K five from that boundary into that facility, into the K eight facility. Plenty of room for it. It would get the utilization somewhere in that eighty-five to ninety percent of K eight building. Then PB Young would return to a pre-K five grade configuration. So you would break up that, much like we did at Poplar Halls and Fairlawn. Which would mean the closure of Chesterfield, but again, doesn't mean the discontinuation of it necessarily if we feel like, but it's not, again, it may be a building you can use or not. But the renovation to Ruffner for the pre-K eight, and again, I'm gonna include, include pre-K here because I think there's room for pre-K at Ruffner. The results of this is a reduction of up to three elementary school facilities. Approximately twenty-one million dollars of priorities one through four off the table. And then the closure of two of the top fifteen highest need facilities in the division. And so again, we're taking a lot of dollars off that deficiency list. So that six million starts to look a little better when I get that number down to closer to four hundred million.
And, and let me also include the St. Paul's work as part of that because you know, in the planning, as that neighborhood is restructured. Enrollments will decline. Those schools are gonna be, the location of Tidewater and PB Young could be impacted by the, the final layout of that. And so we are also anticipating through this process, the future based on the St. Paul's revitalization.
So.
Did a question?
No, go ahead, please.
Do we wanna have questions?
Yeah. Yeah, please.
Each section.
Yeah, I, I would rather do that. That, that way we can get some clarity there.
So my question is, what would the building student enrollment be for combining Ruffner, Chesterfield, and Tidewater Park for a pre-K eight?
I have it back here. Actually, I'll show you that in the feeder, I think, is, becomes in the feeder idea here.
Oh.
So between the two, you can see the total live-in. Between Ruffner and Southside, I gotta divide that out actually. You got about twenty-one, twenty-five in that area. So they're probably about the same size, you know. We have plenty of capacity in the building. And so we're probably talking eight to nine hundred in the, in the, that would attend, a K eight.
Nine hundred.
Yeah. Is my guess. I mean, again, I, I think there's students that will choose out. But I think, again, in a K eight facility, what I like about Ruffner is that you can divide that building into real separate components. That you can make the building not feel like it's eight or nine hundred. But if you get much less than that, you start to jeopardize middle school programming. You don't wanna make a K eight, I mean, ideally, if in a great world where you had all the money and can offer every program in there, you can't make K eights four fifty anymore. Then you have to have a robust middle school program. But I think the building is, is conducive to separation of grade levels. Um, that would not, never make it feel like that. But I, I anticipate that would be the enrollment for that facility.
Others? I, I have a couple.
Okay.
So, um, in your comments about Ruffner being historically underutilized. How, how deep of a historical.
how, how deep of a historical, uh, date point are you, are you using there?
Since I have started planning here.
Okay.
The building's never been utilized above fifty percent.
Right, so that's been, what, since two thousand?
Six years, since six or seven years now, yeah.
Yeah, so, we, we know that, um, I, I don't know what the utilization rate was at Ruffner prior to us, uh, making the decision to, uh, convert it into a high-poverty school. But best as I can recall, prior to us making the decision to convert it into a high-poverty school, the utilization rate was better. And then, once we made the decision to create it into a high-poverty school and not follow through on some of the promises and commitments that were to be made as a result of that, we have seen the utilization change, as well as we know that recently, we moved the Young Skowers and other things from, from out of there. So, can you just speak to me, uh, just a little more, Chesterfield Academy, um, um, Ruffner, Tidewater Park, currently are all schools with, um, hyper-poverty enrollments, as we have described it, as we discussed it. So, I'm not quite sure I'm clear on how you feel this recommendation aligns with our, with the goals that we set.
So, this, where it starts to do that, and again, I, this is the one geographically we, we struggle with in the, in the core here. Now, what we do know is a revitalization of downtown has an impact on this. Those numbers will change. And so, that consideration was taken when we talked about this specific consolidation. That with whatever happens and any sort of preliminary plans I've seen, that, that socioeconomic dynamic will change in this area. And so, again, if we don't do this right away and we wait to see what that change is, that's fine. Because then we can make the adjustments as to not make it that. But I don't anticipate these numbers to sit around seventy, seventy-five percent in, if, if implementation occurs.
Well, see, and I, I think for me, that's key, as we talked about, Ms. Wagner brought up earlier about community meetings. Um, you know, when we did the redevelopment of Broad Creek. And, uh, had slews of community meetings, uh, worked on a, uh, on the city side. And the housing authority side worked on a master plan, Broad Creek Revitalization Plan, that included the Arts Academic and Technology District with Booker T, Norfolk State, New Richard Bowling, Crock Center, Library, all that being a part of it. Part of the idea for the economic diversity there was the completion of that development.
Right.
So, we know that the homeownership on that, at that development has not been completed. And, and it's, you know, hopefully it'll be completed soon. So, what often happens is where I agree with Ms. Wagner and where I appreciate the historical legacy is promises and commitments get made. They don't get implemented, and then we find ourselves right back in dealing with, with some issues. So, you know, I'm reading this and, uh, and I appreciate the analysis that's gone into it, but I'm still very reticent. Because the pattern that I've seen is we are willing to create, uh, hyper-poverty, predominantly African-American schools against the best interest of all research. And then we're willing to allow it to exist as Chesterfield Academy has for years. I'm not saying that we don't do great work there, cause they do do great work there. Matter of fact, they probably do better work under the circumstances that they have to deal with, somewhere to the staff at Booker T. However, I'd just like to get some additional thoughts moving forward as to, um, you know, what we're gonna do differently, even as we did the Southside STEM, uh, Academy. There were promises made about that new middle school that went on for twenty years. And, uh, so, you know, if there's some recommendations in here, how we trigger some things and ensure some things occur and that we don't repeat the same old cycle, uh, is, is very important. But as you and I have talked about often, I understand all the live-in boundaries and where we are in the demographics of the city. Also recognize that all those conditions were a result of, uh, um, policy decisions that we chose to make.
Right.
And so, I know we can always make policy decisions towards the good, and just as we can make policy decisions that bring us where we are today.
And, and if I can, can comment on that, I mean, as Tracy said, this is one that we haven't had the same level of excitement around that we've had to some others. And so, this would, truthfully, this was probably the last piece that we came together with. We started with it early. We, we weren't pleased with the potential solutions. And so, we put it aside as we worked on other options, and then we've come back to it. I don't disagree with anything that you've said. Where I think we find ourselves at the intersection, again, is between those things that the school board controls versus those things that our city and outside entities control. And the impact that it ultimately has on the decisions we make as a school district. You mentioned, you know, housing patterns and, and where folks lived. I mean, that's where we, you know, we, we were back and forth. We kinda touched on this a little bit when we made the recommendations around the Saint Helena feeder pathway to Blair and Maury. And, you know, what become some viable options in making sense with this? As we've learned more about the timeline and the goals within the Saint Paul's quadrant work, we then went back to this to say, you know, do we, do we impact short-term? But as you say, with high-quality programming and, and readiness and, and knowing that it could shift over time. And not could, but hope, but probably will shift. Just yesterday, a team, uh, members of the district's leadership team and, and an outside entity started some of those conversations around what will be different educationally for Ruffner and any other schools within the Saint Paul's work. So, we, far away from prime time and ready to bring recommendations to the board. But that was an exact conversation we spent a couple hours on yesterday. Thinking about how do we begin to address the, the rigor, the innovation, the relevance of education in, in a school that's subject to transition because of changing housing patterns? And yet, not waiting until the housing patterns change to ramp up what the education would look like there.
One, one thing that I would just ask you to consider, um, as we've had these conversations around the, uh, CTE school at Booker T and the Saint Paul's quadrant redevelopment, there also have been discussions around the possibility of, uh, doing a model, uh, public model, kind of built off the work that's been happening in the new E three school. And so, I don't know if you all had the benefit of any of those discussions. But to the extent, if you're gonna be looking at some type of, uh, early education model that already has some commitment to, um, diverse learning environments and may be able to bring some, uh, private sector resources to the table that, that we not forget about that in that equation.
Well, I, I think the board has taken a very, not a good, strong first step. It's taken a, a, a true leap into our opportunity to develop mixed-income pre-K classes. And the E three model is certainly outstanding. We, we've taken advantage of visits there and professional development. But as we've also looked at the work that we've done, we have some of those nationally-certified pre-K teachers in classrooms within our existing capacity. And so, we continue to look for what are the, the best opportunities. I know E three has talked about a footprint within the Saint Paul's work. But again, um, and, and I hear you, you know, what are some resources?
I'd just say, just from a collaboration perspective.
We've, we've been looking at a, a collaborative partnership. As I said, the, the couple-hour meetings we had yesterday, and I'm, like I said, not ready to go prime time, so I'm not gonna damage the potential relationship by going out too early. But that's exactly what we're doing, is who else can we bring to the table with us to help in the development of a very successful educational program? Not only for pre-K, but the K eight component also.
Dr. Robinson, Ms. Wagner?
I just had a question about.
Oh, Dr. Robinson and Ms. Wagner, either way.
Go ahead.
Just the, the, the neighborhood redesign and looking at Broad Creek, because Broad Creek is turning into probably a more diverse community than it has. So, wonder why that was, that school, um, is, it's fed into Norview?
Oh, you mean, uh, the current Richemola?
Yeah, as opposed to bringing it, go on, a big, uh, as opposed to coming to the Ruffner Booker T's.
It was the past, the, because when it was public housing and the effort was trying to provide diversity, that's when they did the zones with Norview. It just hadn't been touched.
Oh, okay.
So, so those are the contexts with this especially, is that as we look at the feeder patterns that I'll talk about, is to really think about some shifts in there. When we had district lea, district leadership team, it occupied a lot of our discussion about, can we make a shift just like that in order to, to avoid the hyper-poverty where we're seeing diversity happening because of development? I think there's some tweaking that happens within there because of those reasons. But I also think that there could be, as we go in this, to this next phase of planning, now that it's on the table, now that the elephant's in the room on it, there's a couple of things it does. First of all, it talks about the consequence of just saying, let's close school buildings. So, you wanna say close buildings because you're declining enrollment? This is what happens. We start to pair groups that we start to create situations that we don't need to create. And so, careful what you wish for, always. You know, I'm pretty frank in these discussions, cause I should be. But the next piece is, is are there educational opportunities for students who just really want a K eight opportunity? That don't want a K five opportunity? That say, a K eight is my model, that, you know, my, my parents want a K eight model, my, that's the vision I have for my child. Why wouldn't that be a choice for students to just say, because it's as accessible as any building that you have in the, in the division? So, are there potential for choice in a K eight program for students who just don't feel like the K five is enough for them? For continuation program? I think those are the great discussions to have, to get to exactly what you're talking about, to allow us some flexibility in allowing that to happen. To that point, you know, Mr. Jordan, I think one of the reasons that I wanted to bring this one forward is to press your issue, is that to go back to when the requests are made, to say, this is what happens that we need to avoid. So, in your discussion of redevelopment, in our discussion of school consolidation, because we know we have to get rid of square footage, and we're on board with that. But here are the complications that come with it because of the way the city has been developed out of our control. And so, I think the ask is being made, and we're answering the ask. And sometimes we just don't like the answer.
And I would, one of Tracy's terms too, and it's sometimes messy in the process.
It is.
Yeah.
Dr. Robinson?
At, at one time, when there were, when there was discussion, if I recall, that they were modeling the Saint Quad's, Saint Paul's quadrant to, uh, what they were doing down Eastlake. And without creating a charter school at Ruffner, is there a possibility that we could have a Eastlake-like model there at, at Ruffner, including those students?
Here again, is the work that we're doing to bring forth a very strong educational model, cause you all know my pushback on charters.
Right.
Very publicly. It's not that I'm anti-charter. I'm pro-public. And I do not believe we have to give away our schools to find success. Example being the Dream Keepers Academy. I'm not pushing back, but, but I've had to say this to the city in terms of the Eastlake model. And I've said it to the people from purpose-built communities. But if you look at what Dream Keepers, the purpose for Dream Keepers Academy was to stand up an elementary choice school that would become the focal point, uh, just as the Harlem Children's Zone in, it does, for the education and building the community around it. That was the intent. It was unfortunate that that got dismantled, because that was the core place for that. And that community would've had an opportunity for a district-wide and community-choice school and a more traditional school based on what the enrollment projections were at that time.
Just a couple of things, and, and if you all decide you wanna put Dream Keepers Academy-type model back here, I might be cheering. But, uh, on the, the Eastlake model, um, you know, which I visited in two thousand and two before we did, uh, Broad Creek, you know, Atlanta is very different than Norfolk, and we don't have a big golf course that we can put in, in the, in the middle of it. And even in the school that they have, no matter what people say about its success measures, the number of students that actually come from that neighborhood is, is, is in question. But that is the concept that I think is being presented here. You know, I'm just struggling with the combining, but.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different models to what you're talking.
And I, and I, and I guess it was the, the strive for the academic excellence. I, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm pro-public too.
Yeah, and that's exactly, yeah, and that's, that, that's the heavy lifting. Uh, you know, earlier this year, we talked about what was on our plates and more like we're dealing with a buffet. You know, in terms of administrative teams. We're trying to roll out this, to move forward, as we should. The implementation of a comprehensive CTE high school without a new building and the shared facility, shared piece. We're pushing on the development of what an educational program would be for Maury's future. We're also thinking about, um, how do we continue to strengthen our specialty programs? And then the Saint Paul's piece comes to play. And we have to think about too, how do we leverage edu, public education in a way in the Saint Paul's quadrant? So, even as we're doing all of these other things, we're, we have this on the table. Now, to the point, as I said, we, we've had conversations with an outside entity where, and, you know, that's our planning board work that we've started.
And you know, it's, it's interesting, because Ruffner, because of where it sits and the, the bones of it, it's just, it's, it's almost perfect to have that, that.
Matter of fact, it could even be in the downtown attendance zone if we really wanted to.
There's a, just as an example, I, there's a, there's a school in downtown Austin. It's a smaller school, but there is, nobody lives in downtown Austin. I mean, it's just not at, or there's no kids that live there. There's still a school there that sits across from the Capitol Building. And guess who it's for? It's for people who travel downtown to work.
About that years ago.
So, they're close to their students, they're close to their kids. Ruffner has always been something in my mind of that example. If you're driving by the school and there's a great program and you work downtown, why wouldn't you wanna put your kid there? Cause I can go to lunch with them, I can go to their athletic events, I can be right there when it takes me forty-five minutes to get down sixty-four to get home.
Right.
And I think there are different ways to do Ruffner the right way, but still allow the neighborhood kids to have a school that they own. I think there's, that's why I wanted to keep this recommendation on the table, to spark that discussion to happen and to drive the other discussion of development.
Thanks for, uh, getting me in trouble. Anything else in this one? Cause I know we have, uh.
So, you, you all ask us to be bold.
Yep.
So, he is bold.
That's bold.
So, we can, we can get to the, my friends from Larry Moore and Terrleton have been calling me all day.
Okay, so, let's go to that then. So, build two new elementary schools. Now, in this case, consolidation of Larry Moore and Terrleton, and we've already seen a letter, and that's great. I mean, I, look, if you don't expect a letter when we put something out like, I mean, we're gonna have the letters. But here's where I'm gonna, here's where I'm gonna put it in context. These buildings are in poor condition. And as the PTA president stated today, they've been asking for money for a long time to renovate the building. This is an investment into neighborhoods that need it. This actually balances socioeconomic diversity in these buildings and adds the idea, but some of this will have to go through a boundary process. That, where I get to on this is that this isn't, this isn't closing a building. This is investing into their communities with a state-of-the-art facility where the facility is no longer an obstacle in their way. And so, not decided where it would be, but one of the sites could be, could be still used for this. But we'd have to go through a boundary process with the Bayview, Little Creek, Tanner's Creek area also, to balance enrollment among the schools. That way, we get rid of some of those high utilizations and low utilizations that do exist in the area. So, I think with this one, again, it's a, I think this is an opportunity that, um, and this is with all due respect to anybody who's living a boundary or who has a tradition of a school building. Those building, those, those boundaries have been put on by an artificial measure of something that was dictated by population that no longer is there or is more of there. And so, um, I want people to defend their school buildings, because that's what they should do. But also understand that it's not, you're, you're, you're defending everybody in Norfolk. That's who you're fighting for, and that's what this plan fights for, to make sure that everybody has a great opportunity. So, we are going to get pushback when we see these things. We obviously know that. But we also know that we can provide some really great opportunities for kids by investing in these communities with some really state-of-the-art facilities. It does come with some pain, and I will never dismiss that. But in this case, where you're going to see that in the consolidation of Larry Moore, Terrleton, and then Lindwood and Willard model, and again, some boundary work with Coleman Place, Monroe, Taylor, Suburban Park, that the closure of four elementary schools to go to two would save that the closure of four elementary schools to go to two would save forty million dollars of deficiencies when you invest forty-eight. Now, so I'm going to take, again, two of the worst fifteen offline with an investment of eight thou- eight million more. Now, I say just eight million, but it's, it's eight million more. And they're going to have the building that fits their community. That is the future. So, we can look at it in two different ways here. And I'm gonna, I'm going to look at this as a great opportunity with a lot of discussion that has to happen with communities if this is to move forward. Um, now, I, I will tell you, because in full transparency, because this is full transparency, that you could make these happen with just boundary changes. No investment. But you're going to talk to six buildings in one area and you're going to talk to seven in another area and try to get them all to agree on how to balance their enrollment for a cost of eight million dollars.
Say that again?
For eight million dollar discussion.
Million?
Eight million of, the discussion's around eight million of an investment to get rid of.
The six.
Yeah. So, but if, no, the forty-eight million to the forty of deficiencies, or you go through a boundary process with fifteen elementary schools is what you'll do. And you can make that choice again, but you can make this happen with the current capacity.
That's punning the issue down the road.
Right. That's, that's.
The building's out eventually.
That eventually is that we'll have, eventually buildings that have to be replaced anyway. So, you can take a community through a couple of processes here, but in the long term, what is the best opportunity for them? And so, and you balance that as a board. You have two opportunities here. And City Council had two opportunities here. That if you're after an immediate one, somebody has to make the decision then, we're just going to do boundary changes right now. But remember, when we have enough capital dollars, we're going to make the investment. And guess what? We're going to go through a boundary process again. And that's, that's okay. We do that all the time in planning. But as it's laid out, um, I, I believe that this is a good investment. I think there's some pain involved, but I believe it's a good investment on a lot of different levels, um, to make this happen. And, um, and again, that's a, that's a pretty good estimate. This actually looks a little forward. We escalated the elementary dollars. This will hold a couple of years, I hope, with construction out there. But, um, you can look at a fifty million dollar investment for two buildings in this. Any questions on this one?
Comments? Senator Gabriel?
Um, the reason that I asked about the building capacity for Chesterfield and, uh, the, the Ruffner pre-K eight is because I'd like to know the research and the data behind having large elementary schools. I know that we have Camp Estella and Southside STEM Academy right now with a large population. But there is some research that's out there that shows that a smaller elementary school provides for a better engagement process with the children and relationship building. And it's.
Only when socioeconomic is considered.
So, so like for Ruffner.
Sure.
How are we going to take that into consideration?
Yeah.
I would, I would, we don't have to discuss it now, but that's some, that's a question that I have.
So, I, I, I'm going to give you a brief answer. Because there's a research that was just released by South Carolina Purdue University, a joint study, longitudinal study, that showed that in project-based learning environments for elementary schools of hyper-poverty, that when schools are converted to hands-on learning, more active learning, instead of classroom, just traditional classroom learning, that attendance increases thirty-three percent. So, if we could make Ruffner a program where kids are there just to be there.
Just to be there.
Because we know that attendance is a big part of, of, in, in, in socio-economically disadvantaged for a lot of different reasons. But we know that that's one way to do that, to combat exactly what you just said, because you're right. The research shows on hyper-poverty, larger elementary schools are tougher to perform in. Um, but, and I agree with that. Um, what I, what I concern myself with is there's a balance of program jeopardy to that also, is that if I make the building too small, that if I have, let's say, one teacher per grade level, I don't believe that's a great educational environment for our kids because it doesn't offer diversity of teaching. And so, I think that you have to balance the program with the size. And then, obviously, the operational efficiency. So, there's a lot of components that go into it. So, I'm on board with you. I don't like the idea of the big school, especially in hyper-poverty areas. We don't, we shouldn't do that. But hopefully, like at a Ruffner, again, we can make the school smaller within the building. And that would be the intent.
But also with the Terrleton and Laramore population, I know Terrleton has a very large military, um, connected, um, population. Um, and those students, um, deal a lot with, um, parents who are coming in and going. And relationships are also important. So, that's just one area that I would like to hear. I appreciate your response, um, but to be taken into consideration.
Absolutely.
And then also, when at, at some point in time when we do engage the community, how families feel the engagement would be, um, how, how engagement would be in a larger school um, versus the smaller setting.
Well, if ever, to remind the, remind the board, Ocean View is built at six hundred students.
Yeah.
So, we've been creeping a little bit in that way. If the recommendation for these two elementary schools was larger than seven hundred, you would hear greater pushback from me. To me, that's that, that's, that's the line for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seven hundred is a little high, but when we see what happens, the relationships matter. Keeping class sizes manageable, building for that. But once we get beyond seven hundred for elementary schools, I'm troubled by those. And the same reason I don't subscribe to high schools beyond twenty-five hundred. I, I prefer two thousand as, as the cap, but twenty-five hundred gets to be too wieldy. And you know, we've seen a lot of things that they describe schools as thirty-five hundred students in the school and whatever else. I know some of that becomes economic, but if we think about the questions that you posed, then we work harder to manage the size of the schools.
And, and design and, and programming, that's where programming becomes critical. I'm, I'm, you, you do this long enough and you, you try to figure out what's the sweet spot. And I would agree, seven hundred's the, the upper limit. I think a six hundred student station elementary school is about the sweet spot. And the reason for that is that there's three or four teachers per grade level, like full-time, like core instructors, which then you get full subject diversity. Um, I think that in most states, funding at that level means you get a full-time media specialist, you get a full-time principal by, and those things. So, that number seems to resonate a lot. And, and I want people to understand that a seven hundred school doesn't mean class sizes are forty.
No, I'm not saying that.
But I, and you're not. But I want to make sure the public understands that just because we make a school a little bigger doesn't mean we increase class size. That's not it. Um, go back to the K eight model. If you're talking about a nine hundred student population, we're talking six hundred, three hundred. Now, at three hundred, I'm at the low limit of my middle school delivery program, I believe. Because it's hard to get a robust program at three hundred, to get foreign languages, career ta- early career tech opportunities, to get all those mechanisms in a middle school with just three hundred kids. And so, that's why that nine hundred at the K eight seems to be a, a pretty good sweet spot too.
You know, that was a concern I expressed about the size of Southside STEM when I first arrived.
Right.
Because if the goal, which as I participate in the conversations around Norfolk more, I think originally the goal was to replicate the success of Gant. But Gant was attractive because it was small. Our K eights, Crossroads, Southside STEM, we have long since left the Gant model. So, when we talk about the purpose for our K eights, we have to have a different conversation about what they represent. But it's not the Gant model because of their sizes.
Yes.
Ms. Maseen?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, that comment because I had asked that in the fall too. And, and along those lines is, you know, we know what the research shows around class size. And I had, if you recall, I had asked about what's the assum-, uh, you know, what assumptions were made around class size in determining utilization and, and all of that. And I think getting to that point where we're really doing best practices in our planning, educational planning, and figuring that out. When I see seven hundred, I think, you know, when I see close to two thousand, you know, students in a high school, I think, you know, considering also safety, considering educational planning as that is evolving, um, you know, how to address that. And closing schools is, you know, yes, there's dollars, but is that what's right for, for children?
Right.
Can I just, and see, this conversation, we, we didn't really get into this part of the conversation when we did the PPA schools.
You're right.
And, and so, that's why we carry over some of these questions in the building size and the capacity and the program. And then how, if you plan program-wise, you can touch all of those kids and have those relationships in account for having a counselor and a librarian and all of that in there. So, this is very important for, for our learning, for the community learning, um, in this process. So, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Build them from the inside out.
Yeah, yeah, you got that.
It resonates. I, when, it's funny how just words matter. When I tell people six hundred and they, like, oh, six hundred. And then I come around, five minutes later, I said, if you had four teachers per classroom, would that be bad? For, for grade level, would that be bad? And they're like, no, four teachers sounds about right. And I go, well, that's about six hundred. It's, it's really amazing how that conversation can happen. But when you put it in the context of education and delivery models of education and what that means, because you can design buildings to be three thousand, but still make them feel like, and we have one in Mason, Ohio that's sixteen hundred, pre-K three. But there are four schools of four hundred on the same campus. You never know there's sixteen hundred kids on that campus. They just, it's operationally good, it's designed good. It's everything about how you can put a lot of kids on a campus and still make it good. So, there's, there's models, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I had a second question. So, when we are talking about K eights as well, and this is a conversation, ongoing conversation that we've had about what the offerings would be in a K. So, as we increase the number of K eights, are we talking about, you know, athletic limitations possibly? Or other extracurricular limitations?
No, well, again, I think we have a model now with the existing K eights of how we look at extra and co-curricular activities. And so, those are taken into consideration.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. One, um, Laramore and Terrleton, in my view, are both, uh, stellar examples of, uh, high-achieving, probably diverse schools today.
Right.
Very different is, Dr. Gabriel said, Terrleton with the whole military, where it seems like ninety percent of the folks just walk the school every day.
Yeah.
And Laramore, uh, which has evolved over the years, but is just doing great things. Um, and so, I think this is great to have the conversation about, my view, two school families that have art, that are demonstrating the research that we're talking about for the rest of the division.
Right.
Um, in your recommendation, uh, here, it doesn't, because we don't, we're seeing this for the very first time, right?
Sure.
Okay. Um, and we don't really have any timelines on it. We know that Laramore's current facility condition index is, I believe, the worst among elementary schools.
It is.
So, in this recommendation or any recommendations, what do we, what's being recommended to address Laramore today? Even as we have this conversation about tomorrow?
So, that's, which is an excellent question. So, part of, I'm sorry.
Facility or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, which is, which, yeah, which is an excellent question. So, part of the next development of, now that we have the condition, and then we have, we have some idea of funding for the next at least year, and then some commitment beyond that. We need to start prioritizing our capital renewal. Um, that should be part of a master plan. And so, the first thing that we need to address within any dollars we get is life safety. And so, we've already seen four million committed educational improvement, or at least two million, because we know that, that Lake Taylor, if it gets approved, it will be a pending thing that we need to spend some dollars on. Ruffner sounds like a longer-term plan, so we don't have that committed. But we've got four million that we should probably be looking at these life safety things first. That's our absolute priority. Um, and so, making sure that, you know, we are warm, safe and dry.
Yeah.
Will be critical.
Heard that before?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Say that about once a month.
Now, again, at four million dollars, this is, this is the Baltimore example. I mean, as the governor of Maryland said, I'm going to give him ten million dollars. Well, great, that fixed that boiler in that high school. But it probably touched nothing else. But it was great that they got ten million dollars to fix that boiler. It's the same example here. That there's nobody complaining about the dollars we're getting. But understanding the length of those dollars in today's world is, is a different conversation. And, yeah, the, there's members of the community and every community that say, you're going to squander it anyway. You're gonna, you're not spending it wisely. But I just showed you one example of even spending it wisely still puts you in a hole. So, um, I mean, I think that's, that's the example. And so, and, and again, we're going to face those people as we move forward in a facilities plan. But I think that's exactly how we address it. That we have a plan here, but you can see what this funding does in the long term compared to our deficiencies. Um, whether you agree with what we're going to say that we're going to do, that's a different story. We have great experts in mechanical and architecture that can make those decisions. So, but I think this summer is spent, as we develop this better, into the, just what you're talking about.
Senator Robinson?
Just anecdotally, because I, I don't have the, the engineering expertise to, to figure this out. But when, uh, the project started coming in with Laramore and what was needed, and they just kept adding up and adding up and adding up, we were almost halfway to a school. But, and we, and that's when we, in the construction or the facilities committee said, let's, whoa, wait a second. Let's, before we put that, start putting that kind of money in there, it's needed, but is it going to get us educationally further down the road? And that's why this conversation is so needed. I'm so appreciative of that, that we're, that we are going to be able to make some priorities and use those dollars very wisely, as wisely as possible.
Yeah, and I think you make a good point. My, I guess the, some of the context is, you know, we are all pleased about the investments that the city has just come up with.
Absolutely.
We also know, as you started off with, it's, you know, we have a lot bigger gap to fill. Um, you know, when we had the, um, uh, the investments that were made at, at Booker T, because we were dealing with some of these issues, you know, the division spent resources
Right.
that, you know, we had, still trying to figure out how to recoup. Likewise, at Laramore, I mean, beyond the obvious holes, I mean, there's some things in there that are significant. And I just think we have to, as part of this community conversation, it was positive to hear the Laramore community and the Booker T community and other communities all come down and advocate for the school system as a whole. But when we start dealing with these prioritizations and what it means and how long and what we're asking uh, teachers and students and others to endure, I hope we will have this open, candid conversation about that as we're having here today.
Absolutely. And I think we, I, I, I don't know if I've shared this, but one of our community meetings at Richard Bowling, we had two teachers that came up to us after the meeting because they weren't sure of the context of the meeting. And because they thought it was about facility, the whole facility plan. And they said, we thought we would see our school on the closure list. And well, then we're like, no, nothing like that. And they're like, why isn't it on the closure list? And they completely threw us off guard because they were like, the condition that we're walking into demands that this building isn't the standard. And so, understand that this conversation happens both sides. That the professionals working in your building, the students, the parents that walk into your building do demand a professional learning envi- teaching environment and work environment too.
Yeah, and heaven forbid I don't mention J Cox, so.
It's, yeah. So, um, okay. So, the next then recommendation goes to, it ends up being a facility impact, but it's regarding pre-kindergarten. A lot of work to be done on here, but the idea is to create a blended pre-kindergarten delivery model. Again, you've got some fluctuations going on with funding about how many you're going to serve. But it's setting a standard for minimum number of classrooms per elementary school. Now, this doesn't mean that every elementary school necessarily has a pre-K. But when you set the program standard for elementary standards, there should be a standard for pre-K delivery that is one enough or is it two, to get the right resources available? But also to blend that with a division-wide option where you have whole-school pre-Ks. And again, I just gave some examples of possible candidates. These are just buildings that, in this plan, may be empty someday. Um, but can you make the investments into those facilities to make them pre-K? And so, the idea here is that what your goal is towards operational programmatic efficiencies. Obviously, when you have a full pre-K, operational efficiencies are a lot better. You've got all your administration in one building, you've got teachers in one building, you can serve. Sometimes when you're at school by school, you may have eight or thirteen, or you might not be able to fully s- serve every kid you can because of just where you're at. So, this has some work to do. But the idea of sitting down with, with pre-kindergarten and talking about that future delivery model, this is an appropriate model. And because it can serve so many more students and be more efficient in the model. But I think one of the first things that we'll have to do is, as we go through, hopefully, one of the stages in the next couple of years is doing what we did for, in an educational standard development for elementary schools. Having an educational specification for elementary schools that identifies if pre-K is going to be at a building that you renovate or newly construct, what's is going to be at a building that you renovate or newly construct, what's the standard? And then you move from there. So it's not, there's not a lot of substance to this yet, other than a direction.
Maseen?
So are you, are you recommending that overall that we move toward and plan toward having our pre-K in outs, in separate buildings?
Both.
Oh, having a combination.
I think it's both.
Okay.
And I think it's an effective model, because I still think that you can get local delivery. But again, a pre-K classroom in every building is not the most operationally efficient model you could ever have. However, it does lead to good continuity in program. It leads to, you know, that, that early involvement of parents in that neighborhood school. So you don't abandon that, but there's also plenty, a great opportunity to have diverse pre-K kindergartens in full facilities.
Well, that's what I, when I saw blended, that's what I had in my head.
Yeah, that also, so we were talking about location blended.
Yeah.
Of standalone and school base, comprehensive school base. But the other piece, of course, is the work that we're doing. And just that reminder of the challenges we have on the Ocean View end of the city, because Pre, Ocean View was designed without pre-K. So we, we have some challenges with families who live on that end, and making sure that all corners of the city have access to the pre-K spaces that we have. And so that's some of the work going forward. How do we think about that? Because, of course, Willoughby becomes Lake Willoughby sometimes in, in High Tide and all of that. So, you know, and the city would love to have Willoughby land. So we've got to figure that out on that end of town.
Yeah.
And, you know, clearly you have great configurations that have been taken into consideration here and changing back. Have, did you, did you all also discuss, you know, elementary models? Well, I don't think, we don't have the capacity, but looking at, you know, junior high, like we used to think of junior high, I say, I'm saying junior high, but you know, the seventh and eighth grade, and having sixth grade be either a separate, you know, in a separate school.
So, so, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, I, I'm just saying, like, looking at different configurations, because middle school, we know, is also, you know, academically, an area where we need to consider something. I think our big middle schools could be impacting performance there. Are we, has, did, did we talk about, or did you all talk about that in your consideration?
We talked some when we look at the K-8, but again, we're part of this being, not just how do we shuffle our real estate, but how we take some schools offline. What you're describing would probably require us to keep more buildings online with declining enrollment to do some of that, or, or larger boundary changes. And from the experiences in, in Worcester, the elementary schools there were pre-K six or K six. The middle schools were seven, eight. Worst design you could ever have. I'm not casting dispersion. But the problem is, when you talk about the relationship building and the continuity in the building forward, seventh grade is the entry year, eighth grade is the exit year.
Yeah.
So those kids didn't get that developmental and that continuity that was needed. And so that, that became a real challenge. You know, so the, I think it had been addressed because, again, elementary parents, well, my kids quite yet to go to middle school, so you could, to keep the sixth grade there. So then seven and eighth stick out, but we heard from principals over and over again around that challenge. When we did several of our innovation schools, we actually saw them have choice for sixth grade in those schools, so that they can have the three years at least to support them. And so I, I think in, in the end, you can find all types of configurations that work and all types of configurations that don't work. And so I think we have to determine what's the question we're trying to answer, or the need that we're trying to fill, if we start thinking of some of the other ones, because you all know my opinion on the three eights, I won't go there today.
Yeah, yeah, well, and I'm, I'm thinking with academics, not necessarily school closures, which I know you are, too.
Well, the academic piece is exactly what I'm saying about the seven, eight model, that.
It didn't really.
I mean, like you said.
That's typically in, especially urban environments, a seven, eight hasn't proven in this success. Again, a great configuration can work anywhere, but it's just, and it's exactly that. It's in and out. Stability is important.
Yeah.
And that three-year program, I think, adds value. I just, I'm, I'm on board with that completely. So did we necessarily talk about sixth grade? No, we didn't. But understanding the context of just what my experience is, is I just, I'm not, and I actually do think it'd have a negative impact on utilization in this division.
Just a logistical point, since we still have a significant more to go. You know, you and, you know, Dr. Boone did foreshadow how bold you might be. I think if I had a sense of just how bold, this might have been the only thing we'd have had on the agenda. Logistically speaking, I mean, it's, I can't remember if that was fast or slow. 7:15. Which puts us already 45 minutes over. I know the, the enrollment, the alignment, and those things are going to, I mean, spark some questions and conversations. And I don't know what your, what your schedule is. We know we have a, a meeting that we have coming up on the 20th. We already know some things we're going to complete there. Do we push through? Do we look at, see if we can do a workshop on the 20th to finish? I mean, I just put that out there, because I need to get a.
I'm, I'm staying now, so for me, it's not my consideration. I'm here.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm just saying.
For these yet, so don't consider me in that conversation.
For, for those of us that.
And I'm here on the 20th also, so.
What is here on the 20th?
I'm, I'm here, I've, I've committed to be here on the 20th, if you needed me or not, so I'm committed to be here anyway.
Start early on the 20th?
We're already starting at two.
I didn't know. I forgot that, so that's why I was asking.
Shouldn't take long.
Are we? So we're starting early on the 20th?
I thought we were. Are we not?
I knew today was early, I didn't know we had a time.
Okay, well.
Terrence nodding, Terrence nodding, no.
Well, that, that, okay, well then.
How much do you think we have?
Well, I don't think it's.
Forty-five minutes?
I'm not so much concerned about what he shares with us. We know each other, and we know that we've already delved quite a bit, because a lot of this material was new to us. So I'm fine with pushing. I just want to make sure that we're fresh and we are able to give it the due diligence that it deserves. And so that's why I'm just raising it. If people are comfortable and want to keep going, I'm fine. Otherwise, if we are able to do something on the 20th, where we can arrive fresh and actually have any more time to, to study.
So, if I could offer just a small compromise here, is that I don't necessarily have to get into detail the feeder pattern, because we will get into a lot of tangents, but if I just skip to the result of what it intended to do, and then just a summary of the recommendations, we could probably close my part in five minutes, but your questions, again, will be.
Firstly, I'm not comfortable with that, because I think that going to the end result without how we got there.
Yeah.
This doesn't work for us, I think. You know, I would rather us either push through or come back and finish the rest of it at, at, at another meeting.
Okay.
Come back.
Give us some time if we do. Go early on the 20th?
Yeah, so you know, the, the thing we have to do on the 20th is compete, complete the contingency valve. We know we're going to have a, a larger personnel docket than usual. So to me, it's just, if we schedule this, it's going to be on us to make sure that when we receive the materials, that we take the time to review it and make our closed session efficient, and then we can set aside time for, for doing this in a workshop. And I also think it's fair to, to the public as well, that has tried to absorb a lot of this, and, and then trying to get in and start talking about the CT school and the enrollment and the alignment and all those patterns. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's pretty robust.
Emotional conversation. So if we're good with that, we can hold that here. We did have a matters of the board, because we had talked about the Booker T naming resolution. The policy committee is looking at that. You are going to meet.
We meet on June 15th.
So we would be able to have them to also do that work, and we can have that available for discussion as part of the 20th meeting as well, if everyone's comfortable with that. So, but we thank you.
Thank you.
For this and.
I'll make a mission slide.
Yeah, anyway.
It's, no, I wasn't headed home anyway, so.
I hear you.
So I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
But I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Boone.
And we appreciate Dr. Boone, all the work that you and your team have also put in. Sometimes it's difficult to remember, because we meet so much, just how much work goes in while you're dealing with buildings on lockdown and school board members calling you every other minute. So we appreciate the work and the time that you and your staff have put in, and we will take the onus on our end to come prepared. So if there's any updates or questions that you've received here that you can follow upon, we'd appreciate that. But we will consider ourselves adjourned for the day, and we welcome any questions that may come forward from the public, just as we receive from the Laramore PTA. So we will move forward and consider ourselves adjourned.